Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the public session and we'll have a report of actions taken in closed session by the city attorney.
The city council considered those actions which are listed on the agenda and there is no reportable action.
Thank you, John. We'll now have the pledge of allegiance by Mayor Pro Tem Hoffman and then if you would remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Fred.
Could you join me on today, today, and this day, 1775, a shock through around the world at our resolution?
(Inaudible) United States of America and true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you still remain standing and head bowed, please, as we go before God this afternoon? Father, we thank you and we praise you. We give you the glory. We honor you. We thank you that you're the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. You're the God that is, and was, and still to come. Lord, you said in Proverbs 14:34, righteousness exhausts a nation, but sin is a reproach. So, Lord, we just pray for this nation. We pray for our city elected officials, oh God. Lord, I just thank you, Lord, that you said in your word in Proverbs 21:1, the kings, the hearts of the kings is in God's hand. And, Lord, you turn it as a river. Lord, these are kings. These are rulers, the governor affairs of your people. And I ask you now to bless the council members, the police chief, the fire chief, the city planners, and all those who play a part of bringing justice to this great city. And I just pray, Father, that you said finally in Romans 13:4, you said, "All rulers are given authority by you," and that they are ministers of God. So, we pray for these ministers of the city of Norco. We pray for Horstown USA. And we ask now, God, for your hedge of protection over all the members and their families. And, Lord, I just pray the blood of Jesus over them. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Fred. We'll now have a presentation of, by the Norco Horsemen's Association. Good evening, Barney.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I believe you have in your packet the list of our 10 top trails that needs improvements. And I know you're working on budget, so we try to get it at this time of the year. The thing we're focusing on this year is connectivity. We have trails that suddenly aren't anymore. And our focus that we would like to see this year is you have the wonderful crossing, the Alhambra Crossing at Hamner, and there's trail missing on both sides of that. And we have talked with Brian. We have offered up an almost no-cost way to put trail fencing on Taft. It would take some city staff time and some cement. And if you can't come up with the cement, I will raise the money for the cement, concrete, whatever you call it. I'm not the construction person. On the other side, by the community center is more of a problem since I believe a resident has moved their fence maybe on the city property and even built a building on it. So, that's going to take a little more effort, but Brian has looked at that with us. And so, I'm hoping that we'll see some things happen in that way this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Barney. We'll now have our business appreciation. Is the Fairfield Inn Suites here? And if not, Scott, do you want to wing it? Okay, buddy. Sure. Thanks.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott Rosa. I'm the vice chair for EDAC, which is the Economic Development and Advisory Council. And as most of you know, for about a year now, we have been working with the city council to bring a spotlight to some of our local businesses that seem to rise above the rest with some special contributions, whether they are sponsoring the local events, drawing more visitors to our city, resulting with more revenue for other businesses in our area, or anything else that seems to make them one of our local businesses stand out just a little bit more. So, tonight, we were here to go ahead and recognize the Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott owned by Excel Hotel Group. The award was going to read or is reading for contributing to Horstown USA as an inviting destination for visitors from throughout California and the world. Excel Hotel Group and Marriott International joins forces to accommodate travelers with warmth, value, and Horstown USA's signature spirit of hospitality. And Melissa and Edgar were supposed to receive that tonight, so apparently, unfortunately, they weren't able to make it. But if they were here, you know, let's give them a hand for being a great contributor to our city.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, let's move to city council communications, reports on regional boards and commissions. Berwin, let's start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week at RCTC, Riverside County Transportation Commission, we voted to approve two contracts that will start the bidding process and eventual construction on the I-15 toll lanes that they go from the 60 freeway south to Cahalko. Be two lanes in each direction will be toll lanes. That construction should start back, start up probably in January or February of 2018. And last Thursday, myself and Mayor Pro Tem Hoffman and Councilman Bash attended the Riverside County Sheriff's Award banquet over at the convention center, which is really nice. We had our Lieutenant Braddock was there, Captain Hedge, and our new chief, Deputy Horton, they were at our table. But it's an amazing award program. Last year, our own councilperson, Grunmeyer, and her sister received an award for community assistance. I guess they assisted a deputy in arresting a person that was being belligerent. But it's amazing. I know there's a lot of employees in the sheriff's department, but it's very amazing at how many of these officers, along with some citizens, were involved in saving lives this last year. It was a, I forget the number, but it was a huge amount. One of the deputies from Harupa that sat there next to me, he got an award because he had saved the life of a two-year-old child that had fell in a pool. And he was able to give him CPR and get him breathing again and everything, and the child is going to be okay. But they just won after another award that night that went on. I was just amazed at how many, all over the county, were involved in saving lives. Also, on Monday night, I attended the Ag Advisory Commission Committee up at the high school. Saturday, I went to the opening of the library over here, the new Norco Library named in honor of late Mayor, Mr. Frank Hall. There was quite a few people there. That was a pretty good event. And this morning, I attended the ribbon cutting over at Eastvale Fire Station, Cow Fire Station Number 31, new station. Chief Lane was there and Chief Silvio from our area. But it's a state-of-the-art fire station, and one thing about it, it's not too far from the boundaries of Norco, so we've got extra help now when we have an emergency. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Berwin. If council doesn't mind, I'd like to just do a mayor thing and bend the rules just a little bit, since Captain Hedge is in the lobby. Would you like to embarrass somebody that's standing next to you up front here, please?
Thank you.
All the way up. All the way up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dan.
Out of the 4,000 or so Riverside County employees, including probably almost 2,000 deputy sheriffs, it just so happens that the deputy sheriff of the year for the entire Riverside County happens to be assigned to the city of Norco.
(Applause).
I wish I could say that was me, but it's Deputy Arturo Mendez. And he's right here, and I'd like to congratulate him as well as everybody else would. Congratulations.
Okay, Robin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was able to attend the Easter egg hunt on Saturday, and let me tell you, I'm guessing Parks and Rec staff takes hours putting out those eggs to see them disappear within two minutes. It is the craziest thing. If you've never been over there, the traffic going to the park was all the way past the prison, and parking was incredibly crazy over there. But it's so exciting to me to see so many families out and bringing their young children to a city event. I think it's probably one of the most popular ones for our youngsters. And I'm really proud of the job that Parks and Rec puts on and what they do, because, again, all that work for two minutes is crazy. So, that was a great event. I was able to go to the library. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful facility. And I would encourage everyone, if you get the chance to go by, I know in my job, I'm able to encourage some young people to go there because they're like, "Ooh, library." They don't use those very much anymore. And so, they have some aspects to the new library. They have study rooms, so for parents that are out there in the audience and your kids are going to other houses to work on projects and you're not quite sure, now they can go to the library and they can have their group work at the library and sign up for a room over there. So, I think that's a great aspect as a parent, one of the services that the library provides. They have a teen area in there as well, a special children's room. So, when you get a chance, please go over to the library. The work they've done there is absolutely incredible, and it's going to be a great value to the community. That is all that I have.
Thank you, Robin. Ted?
Been busy. I want to thank Kevin for helping coordinate with the school district on the Norco High School Veterans Day presentation that we did. We got to go to several of the classrooms there veterans, a lot of us from Vietnam era, and share our stories and our experiences in the service with these high school students as they are going through their history programs. So, it was quite rewarding. Of course, the next day, the film festival was going off the high school. I also got to kick off the Kiwanis 5K, got to get them started. Whoo, there we go. And they were out and they go, and they were done. Important meeting with the mayor and the waste management personnel. They discussed the very, a new, possibly a new cleanup program we're going to have and try to get started here in the fall. Instead of us having dump day, is you go, you bring your trash to a special location here in the city, and you can get rid of those big bulky items in your trash in sometime in the fall. We'll keep you posted on that. And then naturally, our, every time we meet, we talk about the manure-to-energy program and our manure disposable. So, we're working on that. Attended the California Rehabilitation Center update. We're on a quarterly meeting with the prison personnel. They say they're not going anywhere, and they're challenging anybody in the state that says, "Hey, we got to close it because there's all the money that we're spending outside of our state to house inmates to California." So, they're challenging, "Don't close us." Of course, right now, they're still going through their ACA accreditation to hopefully remain open. They've done over $6 million in upgrades to the facility, and currently, they're housing about 2,700 inmates over there, which is a little, a more increase than we've had before. I was pleased to see Captain Hedge and along with Lieutenant Braddock were there, along with the city manager and Linda from the Norconian Club. We were all there to hear what they had to say. Following, we got the, if you have not been over, and I know this is in Norco, but the Corona Regional Medical Center, if you have had to be treated there in the last year and you go there today, what a difference. They have 22 beds in the ER room now. I mean, I went there years ago, and I had to sit outside in the hallway for two or three hours. They have changed that. They have upgraded that facility quite a bit. So, we got to see the grand tour and they opened it up. So, hopefully, you won't get sick, but it's amazing how much they've done over there. And all the years I've lived in town, I remember one of those little two-story white building on the corner and to what it's become today. Of course, myself and the fellow council, we got to wish Rose Eldridge her 97th birthday over at the senior center. Brian, you guys did a great job. Tall Peggy, great job in honoring Rose in the building named after her. Just a reminder, we had our day of the cowboy meeting. Berwin's bowed out this year, giving it to me. Will be on July 22nd, Berwin. And we're going to have a bunch of mules there, so you ought to come out. Naturally, I attended the opening of the library, and I'll agree with Robin, very spacious inside. If you ever had to go to the old library, there was no room at all. Now, you've got elbow room, so that's a good thing. Kicked off Horse Week on April 16th, Easter sunrise service. Remember, it starts Friday. And then Jeff Cahan, I see you hiding back there. Thank you very much. Wonderful ceremony for the 50th anniversary, back commemoration of the death of George Ingalls, Congressional Medal of Honor recipient up at Ingalls Park on April 16th. He did a good job, fella. Great. Appreciate it. And then, fun thing, guess what? Our Norco girls softball team kicked some butt yesterday. They are still undefeated, 23 and 0, and they are the, I'm not going to jinx them. Okay, they beat Santiago, okay? That's a good thing. And they're number one in the nation, so hurrah.
Well, I was at all those places. The film festival is very successful. Just money-wise, we raised about $10,000. Kiwanis run, Andy, I think we raised 8,000?
13,600.
13,600. I'm thinking net. I did go to an Eagle Court of Honor that nobody else went to, and it was an amazing Eagle Court of Honor that was fantastic. And kudos to Jeff. He did a great job on that. That was really good, and we had quite a good turnout. The emergency room, as he said, I sit on the board of directors, and there's things that have happened there, that the emergency room, we have a stroke center. And I was also, it was nice to hear Ted speak because he knows the place, so it was good. But pretty much everything else, Rose's birthday, I was at all those things. So, and it was nice, our council tends to travel together, and I think that that helps the community, so it's nice to see all of you go. And I can't add anything to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Well, busy last couple of weeks, so just try to find a couple of single items here that we didn't all attend. Last week, I attended the Chino de Saltra Authority Board meeting. And what I'd like to do is, maybe at our next council meeting, do a little PowerPoint of all the different projects and a project status overview for all the council, and I'll do that in conjunction with Chad. But the one thing I did want to bring up, which is the Santa Ana River boring, that they have, they have now decided that they're going to go ahead and try to bore again through, underneath the river.
(Inaudible).
That's right. And they hit one of them, I'm sure. So, we just got plenty of money, apparently. The geotechnical investigation anticipated schedule is in May, though I was informed that they were down there the other day and didn't inform us that they'd be down in the riverbed. Design completion is, they're looking at July of this year, and their budget for design at this point in time is $1.5 million. I have no further comments on that. And this was pretty interesting. I attended Easter brunch with about 35 or 40 seniors at Clark Terrace this week and learned all about the way our city should be run. And they don't hold back, so that was, it was very enjoyable. And that's all I have on that. So, let's go ahead and move into city council consent items. Does anyone wish to pull any items?
(Inaudible).
Have a motion and a second. Cheryl?
Councilmembers Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, we'll have public comments. Cheryl, do we have any cards?
Yes, Mayor Scott Deveraux.
Greetings, Mayor Newton, Mayor Pro Tem Hoffman, councilmembers Bash, Grunmeyer, and Hannah, and city manager Okora. My name's Scott Deveraux. I live at 876 Harness Lane in Norco, and I'm accompanied by my wife, and I am speaking on behalf of other neighbors in our community surrounding Norco Hills Park. The reason for my visit today, our visit, some of the members could not be here, they had other commitments. We had kind of a little community meeting amongst ourselves last week. But the reason for our visit today is the variety of mischief and destruction and illegal activity that has plagued the park over the last two years. Norco Hills Park has been frequented by drug dealers, underage drinkers, homeless people, and mentally unstable people threatening our neighbors and vandalizing the park. This part of the community has experienced, you know, we did have a homeless person that was living in the park, which really, you know, isn't really a problem until they start dealing drugs and bringing other bad elements. We're fortunate that the sheriff's department did arrest that individual, and we thank them for that. We often find cars parked in the cul-de-sac all hours of the night with people in them, usually young adults. And the reason they park there is because it's dark, it's not very well-lit, and it's a place to hide, to do whatever. My guess is, you know, mischief and illegal activity. Neighbors have witnessed this exchange of drugs from their windows. We've had a neighbor's house broken into, stools, I'm sorry, tools stolen out of their home, cars broken into, and mailboxes. We've had underage drinkers regularly frequenting the park recently and with, you know, open containers of alcohol when we go down there to walk our dogs. Teens, young adults have damaged fencing. I've caught them driving down the horse trails with their four-wheel-drive vehicles and regularly leave their trash scattered all over the park, including broken beer bottles, which I've pulled glass fragments out of my dog's feet because of it. These people often become extremely belligerent when they're asked to leave, and we do ask them to leave when they're drinking for no other reason. Recently, we had a man enter the park with axes in both hands, threatened a woman with her baby. He was obviously mentally unstable because I was there and witnessed it. And she basically grabbed her baby and ran out of the park in fear after he had asked her, you know, "Why does her baby have two heads?" We were, again, fortunate to have the police come out that day. I made the call, and they did find that individual and arrest him, and I commend them for that, so thank you. One other thing in the area is the CVS Pharmacy. Behind CVS Pharmacy, there's a dumpster there. We get a lot of activity at that dumpster, people dumping. Every week, you can find couches, refrigerators, you know, other large trash, pieces of trash there, because it's behind there and it's dark and it's just a, well, if you're looking to dump trash, it's a great place because there's no video. And it's easy accessible, and it's an easy way out for people to dump trash there. The effects of these events have scared our residents who no longer bring their children to the park to play. Other residents are concerned when they come with their horses to ride. That same day, we had, where we had the mentally, the mentally challenged individual that was down there, unstable individual, not challenged, there were other people riding their horses, and they basically just left their saddles there and ran out of the park, basically in fear of their lives. And I don't blame them. The guy had two axes in his hand. Basically, people are becoming afraid to visit the park and walk through it at night, particularly the neighbors in our tight neighborhood. So, we're asked here to, you know, we're here tonight to ask you for your help, to help restore the park back to the residents of Norco. We're asking for a nightly patrol to visit at least once a night. That may or may not be possible. I realize that, you know, all resources are tasked, even the police, and it's also a priority for them. Depending on the priority, they have to respond to the higher priority. The street light in the cul-de-sac comes on kind of when it wants to. I believe it's an Edison pole. But that cul-de-sac is very dark. The park itself is very dark, and it sits between two streets, Rock Springs and Harness Lane. And so, it can be accessed from two different sides. So, it can, you know, people can easily run out of either side of the park if they're doing something illegally. We'd appreciate, you know, a brighter lighting, and we believe the area needs security cameras and signage clearly stating the park rules. But that's what we're asking for tonight, and, you know, I appreciate you listening to me tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Believe me, your concerns will be heard.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Davy Phillips?
I just have to remind everybody, we try to stay around three minutes.
I will. I will keep it short. Thank you, Mayor and the councilmen.
Good evening.
I am a resident of Norco, and it's such a pleasure to be in a city where you pray at the beginning. So, I love my city, and I love it even more now. I'm just piggybacking on what Scott was saying. I am one of the residents adjacent to the park, so while other people can leave the park, I cannot because I live right next door and I see all the mischief. What's unfortunate, it is a beautiful park with a horse-little equestrian, and the people that come there are now uncomfortable because most of them are ladies and horses, and when they see the homeless people and all the mischief, they tend to leave, which is what it was meant for. So, all we ask is that perhaps you can put cameras in the park and better lighting, like Scott said, and maybe patrol it a little bit better so that our city will not become competent. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Thompson?
Good evening, council. Tonight, I want to introduce 31 letters from residents that can't attend tonight for your viewing and introduction into the record as far as tonight's zone code changes. So, I just want to introduce these into the public record.
Let me get a ruling on this.
You can do that. That's not a public comment, though. That's on the agenda, so.
Okay.
So, could you wait till the agenda item?
You can turn it in, city clerk, but you don't need to stand up and tell us.
I can turn these in at the public comments.
Or you can turn them right now.
Right now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Overstreet?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Well, I want to make an official invitation to our 47th Annual Horse Week. Ten days of incredible fun starts Friday, the 21st, with our first ranch rodeo night. Then, of course, my favorite project, which is the big parade on the Saturday morning, 10 o'clock sharp. We have three divisions, 40 entrants. The grand marshal is American Legion Post 328, and our town marshal is Councilperson Berwin Hanna. And ranch rodeo, chili cook-off, 10 days of a week's, how we get it in there, I don't know. But I don't think a lot of people realize, there, in that all-volunteer committee, there are 48 different projects that they produce, and each of those committees have committees. So tremendous amount of volunteer effort. And we want you all to come out and enjoy it, and please consider helping and volunteering also. We need some more people and some young blood, we're all getting older. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Koch?
Good evening.
Good evening, Council. I'd just like you guys to maybe look into how ad hoc committees are formed currently with the one that went on for this building accessory issue. The only people that were on the ad hoc committee were two city-paid commissioners, who were appointed by two city-paid councilmen. Maybe have equal number of non-paid city residents on the ad hoc committee as the council and commissioners, maybe expand it to eight, or 10, or 12, or whatever it need to be, but and also have opposing sides of the view. I mean, it's pretty clear, when we come to these issues, that the room's very divided on a lot of issues. And if you want to try and get a true ad hoc committee, it needs to have residents that aren't paid by city and aren't appointed by other people that are on the committee. And by doing so, you'll have issues that weren't brought up, that residents keep secret to themselves, that could actually enact better rules for the city as a whole. And you can meet a mutual agreement versus having a battle line set and nobody willing to budge. You can actually have open communication among each other and come up with something that makes sense. So I just urge you guys to look into how ad hoc committees are formed, and in the future, maybe consider adding or changing it a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Leach?
Good evening, Council. Recently, I put my house up for sale, because I don't agree with some things that the City Council is doing with our funds up there on the LMD. And we were in negotiations with two different people to buy the house, and we had an extremely warm day, and they came out, and they were equestrian people. My backyard is, I think, 17,000 square feet, so it's very good for someone that's got multiple animals. And the roosters that we addressed eight or nine years ago and changed the rules about, City Council doesn't seem to think it's a big deal. I've given the animal control pictures of the birds. They had a couple of fires last year up there, so the fire department made an appointment to come see the facilities, and they moved the birds from the house where they keep them, the two houses where they keep them, to my neighbor's house, put them beside the house. One day, they went to feed them, and they left the gate open, and they all were in my front yard, so I took pictures of them. Animal Control seems to think that they're not roosters. There are ways to tell if they're male or female. If you had pigeons as a child, you know, there are ways to find out. So they do get rid of all the hens. And both negotiations fell apart that day with the house. You know, I'm not really worried about selling the house that much. I like my neighborhood, I like my neighbors. I disagree completely with what you do with the funding up there, but something has to be done, because the house next to me was probably worth $700,000 in the minimal, in the market. They had spent $100,000 on their yards, and it took almost a year to sell that house because of the roosters. The people that bought it think they stole it. And I really think you need to address, instead of spending nine months on one man's agenda, I really think you ought to go after things in the city that are for the people, instead of against the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jody Weber?
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
When I left the City Council meeting on April 5th, I never felt so unwelcome in a community. I've served on two club boards, I've volunteered for committees for this city, I've donated to city events, I've donated to the memorial, anticipate doing it again. But someone like me is not welcome in this community, because I have not conformed to an animal-keeping lifestyle, or a horse-keeping lifestyle, because I don't own a horse. While this attitude has existed in some residents in this community, and I have met them, I never envisioned that this attitude would actually permeate this City Council, an attitude of unwelcomingness that would actually permeate to the extent in which you have failed to consider your responsibilities for representation and respect for a number of the residents. Each time there has been a contentious issue regarding animal-keeping rights, everyone has consistently quoted the city charter, which, mind you, doesn't even exist on the city's website. I searched it extensively today. Despite the fact that I don't own horses, I was proud of the strengths and the character that this city had to actually uphold and protect animal-keeping rights for its citizens. The fundamental principle behind your fervor and your passion to maintain animal-keeping rights is the same principle behind my passion to oppose any oppressive actions by government. And that fundamental principle is freedom. While it's necessary and reasonable to consider rational limitations on one's use and enjoyment of their property because of abuses in the past, to do so in a discriminatory fashion is simply tyrannical. It's not tyrannical in a cruel sense, there's other definitions of tyranny, which includes the unreasonable fashion of seeking to invoke hypocritical, discriminatory, and unreasonable measures for the sole purpose that contradicts the fundamental principles that the freedom, the fundamental principle of freedom that this city charter champions, and which all of you quote and champion. I'll leave you with one quote. You can separate peace from freedom. You cannot separate peace from freedom, because no one can be at peace unless you have freedom. Thus, with each decision that you make that impacts your constituents' freedom, you can be certain that, as you do, there will not be peace. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Well, one of the things I'm here for, I just went up in front of the planning committee for an accessory RV building and boat storage. Some of the reasons, only three reasons I was denied, and it were very simple reasons. They wanted a smaller.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Are your comments, public comments, or regarding the agenda item on accessory buildings?
Well, the public comments is, there's no guidelines. They said they wanted a smaller building. They wanted a building with Western.
Are we okay on, because I think maybe we're crossing on the agenda item, and that's why I'm asking.
Frankly, at least from my perspective, I prefer you make the comments that it sounds like you're making during the public hearing on the agenda item, so they're a part of that public hearing record.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
Okay. Thank you, Cheryl. Okay, now we'll begin item 5A, ordinance number 1019, Zone Code Amendment, 2017-01. And I'm going to ask the city attorney to get us started, because this is a continued public item.
Sure. I didn't know they was going to do it here before the, we actually had the public hearing. But as you recall, those of you who were here at the last meeting, the council reopened and continued the public hearing. Really? It's on. I mean, I don't know what's, God, nobody's ever complained to a lawyer, they couldn't hear them. See, and even the ones back there can hear me. As those of you who were here at the last council meeting and have read the agenda, recall that the City Council reopened and continued the public hearing to tonight, but for the limited purpose of discussing those issues which weren't addressed at the last council meeting. And the purpose of this continued public hearing is not to reiterate the views that were expressed, regardless of positive, negative, on the issues at the last council meeting. It's not intended to be the second bite of the apple, but it's rather to allow you an opportunity to give input to the council on issues that will be discussed tonight. And the simplest way probably is going to be simply listening to Steve King when he makes his staff report presentation, and you'll have a better understanding of what types of issues are subject to the public hearing. Second thing is just, because this was asked of me before, if, in fact, there is adopted an ordinance tonight, that ordinance and its change in rules will not be effective as to the, essentially, two accessory building applications which are in the system. One, which you just heard Mr. Pulley comment on, was the one that was considered by the Planning Commission at the last council meeting, excuse me, at the last Planning Commission meeting, and was denied without prejudice, and Mr. Pulley was encouraged, based upon their comments, if he chose to do so, to modify his proposal and bring it back. The second one is one which is going to be heard by the Planning Commission at its special meeting of April the 26th. The process that those two will go through will continue to be the conditional use permit process, regardless of what happens here tonight.
Okay, John, thank you. And then just same ground rules as before, if we can try to hold our comments to three minutes, and we'll be respectful to everyone's opinions. So Steve, do you want to start?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. As already stated, this is a continuation from April 5th, when the City Council heard an extensive presentation of proposed amendments to the Norco Municipal Code and the Norco Ridge Ranch specific plan and the Norco Hills specific plan with regards to regulations to control the size of accessory buildings and revamping the application and review process that we currently have for accessory buildings. At the end of the presentation, there were some issues that were brought up by the City Council and requests for additional follow-up. So what I'm going to do is go through all of the comments. Some of them are repeated, so I'm only going to state them once. But I'll go through the list of comments, and then there's, of those items, there's some that we need some additional follow-up and direction from the City Council that I'll mention, I'll summarize at the end of the list. And there are, well, I'll just start doing it. So the first comment was that once the, once the regulations become effective, if they do, that there be some additional training that occurs for staff, the Planning Commission, and City Council, which that can be done, once the ordinances do become effective, if that's the action that's taken. There's a request that definitions need to match. The definitions in the municipal code need to match the definitions in the building code. We've started that review. So far, everything matches. If we come across something that doesn't match, it could either be addressed later with a code amendment, or we can introduce it before the second reading of the ordinance. There was concern about future commissions and councils and the ease of being able to get a variance. And the difference between a conditional use permit and a variance is a conditional use permit is regulated by the city in its municipal code, and it's based upon findings of compliance and compatibility to surrounding land uses. A variance, on the other hand, is regulated by the state and requires very specific findings that a property cannot meet the zoning regulations that are imposed by the zoning code, and as a result, is offered the option of being able to get a variance from those requirements. It's not something that you are just able to say, I don't want to do it, therefore I want the variance. You have to be able to demonstrate that your property, because of whatever the situation is, you're being denied the full use and right of your property that everybody else enjoys through that zoning regulation, and therefore are subject to approval of the variance. The findings are very specific, and because of that, it's a lot more difficult to get a variance, and there'll be, probably will be a rare occurrence, should that happen. Another comment was that there should be a bi-yearly report of the progress and status under the new regulations, and that can certainly be implemented once it gets approved, and this will probably be a good idea, because one of the comments was that the regulations that are being proposed are based a lot on a study that came out of UC Davis for animal keeping, and that's a static study that gets revisited from time to time, and as it changes, we ought to be able to reflect the changes in the code as needed, and that's something that we could look at biannually in the report and update. There was a statement that there's a preamble to our architectural review section in the Norco Municipal Code that talks about the rural character and horse-keeping intent of the city, and that this be included in the sections, all of the sections that allow animal keeping, including the two specific plans, and your attached ordinances have incorporated that preamble into those chapters, similar to what's in the architectural review section. Question came up as to whether the new regulations that are being considered provide enough protection to schools, and in that, because of the new guidelines, there is a lot more information being requested from applicants in terms of what the use is going to be and what types of materials would be stored on the property. And there also is the administrative policy that you had attached to your staff report that basically gives a checklist analysis of any potential impact that staff is required to follow in its review of accessory buildings that will be passed on to the Planning Commission. There was a request that the open areas of lots not just be defined by the PACA or the open animal area, that the, in the municipal code, the intent and purpose for animal keeping in various sections of the code refers to the protection of open areas, and this is one of the items that I'll put at the summary list at the end of my presentation, that we would need additional direction from the City Council if you want to enhance or expand what open area is in terms of the definition on an individual lot. Another comment was that the architectural, are we providing enough criteria for the Planning Commission to be able to make a decision on the proposed architecture of a building? We did, as you recall, for We did, as you recall from the presentation at the last meeting, there were criteria added that includes articulation of long walls with windows and doors, requirement that the materials, style, and colors of the accessory building match the primary dwelling. And then questions to those ends are also placed in the applications that were presented in draft form at the last meeting. So this is another item that I'll summarize at the end, that we would need to get additional direction from the city council if you want to expand that analysis and review beyond what's already been done. There was a comment that neighbors need to be listened to. The current requirement for a conditional use permit, which is the current process, is that proposed buildings over 864 square feet are advertised in the newspaper and then to mailing notices within 300 feet of the property in question. We will continue the notification process, except we will not be publishing in the newspaper. This will only be notices mailed to the surrounding property owners. And then the planning commission in its discretion will take any comments that are received in opposition or support or concerns or questions in its discretionary review. And so it would be a case by, basically case-by-case analysis of any of those concerns. There was another comment that shall needs to be adhered to, and that's noted, that's both, both for applicants and staff in the preparation of the application materials and the review by staff. Another issue that came up was why 20 feet was determined to be the maximum height of animal keeping accessory buildings for large animals. The, there was a lot of discussion back and forth by the council and by the audience as well, as to what the ultimate height should be. And this is another item that, again, I'll summarize at the end, that we would need further direction from city council if we're going to change that from, it's currently at 20 feet proposed. The question came up about what about RV structures, and then related to that, accessory buildings that are proposing restrooms on properties where they're not on sewer, they're on septic. So I'll address it kind of globally. If a property is on sewer, they would be allowed to connect into the existing system on site. They wouldn't be allowed to have their own connection to the sewer system. Clarifiers would not be needed. But if a property is on a septic system, they would have to show first that the system has capacity to handle what's ever being proposed to be added to it, whether it's a dump station for an RV or a restroom in an accessory building. And a potential option that could be considered is, is that it be an automatic requirement that if such a use is being proposed, that it be automatically required to connect to the sewer system. So that would be another issue that we would request additional input from the city council. Another comment is that without the CUP, we lose the inspection rights, potentially. This was another issue that was debated back and forth between the city council and members of the audience. The, ultimately, the, it, it seemed like the direction was that we were going to back away from automatic annual inspections and go back to a inspections that would be on demand based upon a validated violation of the municipal code. But again, that would be something that we would seek additional council direction as to whether you want to forego the automatic annual inspection in, in place of just having inspections when there's violations that need to be, or reported violations that need to be inspected. There was, there was a requirement that sandwich panels not be allowed. There was some discussion back and forth as to the appropriateness of this restriction. That would be another item that we would ask from, for more direction from the city council in terms of architecture and what you want to recommend that staff do in terms of architectural review and planning commission as well. Okay, now we're starting to get into comments that have been repeated, so it'll go faster. Okay, there was a question as to whether the fire department has a list of materials that in large amounts could be considered dangerous or toxic in a residential setting. And the question was if there is a threshold where the amount is determined to be unsafe for residential use. And I'll, I'll respond, and if I say it wrong, I'm sure they'll override me and set me straight. But what was, was explained to me is that as, as with all of the other issues that have been brought up, and these will be looked at in terms of an extensive list of potential impacts that each project may or may not have, and one of those will be proposed uses of buildings. The commercial operations within these buildings from the onset would not be allowed. And if afterwards a commercial operation does start up in a building that's not been authorized for that use, it would become a code compliance case. The, the fire code itself does not apply to the storage of materials for residential single-family properties. So, so the long way around to the answer is no, there is no threshold because they generally don't look at residential properties. Another issue came up was the size of the bathroom. It's currently proposed at 30 square feet. And the issue was brought up that 30 square feet, if you use the same design criteria as an RV, actually could accommodate a shower. So this is one of the items that we'll be asking for additional direction from the city council as to what the appropriate size should be for a restroom, washroom in an existing, or in a proposed accessory building. The, getting back to the septic system and the issue related to what was already discussed, the idea was offered that if a proposed RV dump or restroom in an accessory building is on the other side of a house or property from where the septic system is located, that could prove to be a costly investment for the homeowner. And that really is up to them on how they want to, if it's a cost that they want to incur. They, they wouldn't be allowed a separate sewer connection, and they wouldn't be allowed a separate new septic system. So it's something that they have to take into consideration. And then again, if the city council wants to, in its additional direction, we, it could be a requirement that any, any property that's on a septic system that proposes new, new facilities to be connected to it, that they automatically be connected to the sewer system. There was a lot of discussion about the architecture that I've already talked about, and what should or should not be required in terms of compatibility and matching materials to the house. And then the idea that if somebody wants to build an accessory building that wants to make it look like a barn, should that be an allowance or consideration in, in the review? Everything right now is discussed, discussed. Okay, and then after, after the conclusion of the meeting, I had additional comments come to me, so I will present those for additional direction that we need to get from the city council. And the idea was brought up that because Norco Ridge Ranch and a few A120 properties currently are required to have PACAs, primary animal keeping areas, and their, their regulations are different than an A120 zone, should they not be excluded from consideration under this proposed Zone Code Amendment? That would be something that we'd ask the city council to give direction on. But a concern there that I'll introduce or include in my presentation is if, if we do not include Norco Ridge Ranch, the potential of getting back to one of the issues that we initially started to look at, and the reason why we started, was the potential for large or tall buildings relatively close to property lines, only five feet away. And so that would be a consideration that we'd ask you to take in, into your, into your consideration if, if you want to start looking at that. And then the last one that came, this also came up after the meeting, was that in Norco Hills specific plan where we do not have PACAs, and some of the lots in that specific plan are actually recorded as non-animal keeping properties because of the topography, that when one, an owner within that neighborhood decides they do want to grade, that the new graded area be taken into consideration for increasing the, the amount of allowed animal units on that property. And additionally, if grading's being proposed for an accessory building, then there ought to be consideration for grading to increase the potential animal keeping on that property as well. This actually is different from what's being considered tonight, and we would ask that if this is a direction that the city council wants to go, that this would come later, and not far later, but on the heels of, of this tonight, we could bring it forward as a separate specific plan amendment, because there are different issues to look at and consider that are different from the intent of what the ad hoc committee was set up to There are, so just in summary, what's being proposed from April 5th and then tonight is a new review procedure and regulations that are needed because of misapplication, misunderstanding, or just not following through on the regulations that needed to be adhered to with our current regulations, that have been abused and have allowed large buildings to go on properties that are, may not be suitable for that large of a building. The original intent of the ad hoc committee was to look at how we regulate and control the size of accessory buildings and the review process and the way that occurs. And what's being proposed is kind of a, more than a Band-Aid. This is actually a, an effort to correct abuses that have been allowed to happen in the past with our current regulations. And with the requirements that are in the draft applications that you received on April 5th, along with the specific requirements that are being proposed with chapter 18.68, which specifically lists the requirements of what each type of building would be required to have, and then probably most importantly, the administrative, the draft administrative policy that details tasks that have to be followed by staff in its review of, of accessory buildings before it even gets brought forward to the planning commission. All of this is intended to make the process more understood and more easily reviewed by the planning commission in its discretion. And with that, there's one last thing I need to, there was a typo or something that got left out. In the chapter 18.68, we left out that an animal keeping structure for large animals is, is subject to the graduated setback requirement. So in the list of nondiscretionary requirements for that building, for that type of building, it would be added as letter D, the way it is in the other two categories of, of accessory buildings. And then the, the rest of the letters would, you know, follow after that consecutively. So if with the, I can either go through the items that we need direction from city council one by one, or just turn it over to city, to city council for discussion, however you want me to do that. I'll, I'll.
Steve, I think, and it might be a benefit for the audience, if you want to just very briefly just read the, the nine issues that seem to compile
Okay.
this extension.
Okay.
And then we'll go ahead and have questions of staff.
Okay, so these are the items that we are looking for further direction from the city council tonight. What other open area requirements or definitions should be considered in the open area of an individual lot? Two, what other architectural criteria should be included beyond what has already been established? Three, what the maximum height of a large animal keeping shelter accessory building should be? Four, if a property is on a septic, a septic system and is proposing an accessory building with an RV dump and/or a restroom, should the owner be required to connect to the sewer system as a, as a condition of approval? Five, should automatic annual inspections be required, or should projects be conditioned so that immediate inspection is allowed upon demand by the city based on evidence of a code violation? Six, should sandwich panels be a restricted material? Seven, is 30 square feet an appropriate size for a restroom with a one basin, sink, and a toilet? Eight, should the proposed graduated, should the proposed graduated setback not be required for lots that have a primary animal keeping area? And then nine, should there be a future specific plan amendment to add a requirement to the Norco Hills specific plan that upgrading has created more flat pad area or is being proposed, that would create more flat pad area, that the lot in question be reconsidered for increasing the allowed number of animal units on that lot from what is recorded with amendment one to that specific plan? So that's them.
Thank you, Steve. Does council have any questions of staff? Berwin?
Well, number nine there, Steve, about the grading. I was always under the impression that up there that, that they weren't allowed to grade. I know several times where code enforcement's had to go up there and stop grading, so what you're saying here, I may be reading it wrong, is that they're going to be allowed to grade and then decide if they want animals now, or what, what is that?
No, it actually, you're right, they're not allowed to grade without permits, and in the specific plan, they're actually not allowed to grade in the protected open hills area. But that's not to say the grading hasn't occurred. In fact, we just had a case a few months ago where the applicant actually requested the planning commission to approve an increased number of animal units on a, well, to approve animal units on a lot that was recorded as not being allowed to have any. And grading had occurred on the property. Don't know how it didn't happen, but it was there, and they had a, plenty of flat pad area to accommodate animal keeping, and the planning commission did approve that. So, so, and again, this would be brought back later. It's not, we're not recommending that it be considered in the discussion tonight. But the idea being that if grading has occurred, or if grading is being proposed, that the number of animal units be changed reflecting whatever amount of flat pad area is being increased on that property.
Okay, and the one right above it, number eight, should the proposed graduated setback not be required for lots that have a PACA? I would think that some of those lots, and I know all lots are not the same size, because some of them are not 80 feet, some over like 60, 65 or something like that. And I've been on a lot of them up there when I was working. But the ones I've been on had, had used their PACA right. I mean, they didn't do anything illegal and then put their PACA somewhere else. They had their horses up on the primary animal keeping area. animal keeping area. But if, if they wanted to put up, say, the proposed building, 1,000 square feet, and they were going to have to go through all the setbacks, it's not going to work on those, on those small sized lots that already have their, and whether they have their animals there or not, if they've got to preserve their PACA area, how's that going to work? Because like I said, all lots, all lots are not the same width.
Right. And, and this is one of the situations, I mean, not only are they not the same width, but many of the lots up there have, have a great differential between where the home is located and where the PACA is located. And a lot of the, not a lot of them, but there probably will be situations where the allowed animal or the allowed size for an animal keeping structure can't be fit on the property because of that split, split level configuration. And, you know, I will, I'm sure John will override me if I misspeak, but that to me would be a situation where a variance would be applicable, and they could come to the planning commission with findings that would support a variance for their property to not have to, for whatever regulation they're trying to get relief from, they probably would be able to make findings for that variance.
Well, I still don't think some of those would fit. And when they were doing construction up there, I went up there and looked at some of those, and where the PACA was up against the hill. And you come off of the PACA, you had about 20 feet from the bottom of that PACA to the back door. And I always worried about those people getting flooded out when it rained, because water going to run down in there. So they wouldn't, there's no way they could ever apply for a building on those properties, because there's just not, not room.
Well, and the variance could be not just size of building and location, but it could also, also be a request for a variance to how much of the PACA they can cover. They're currently limited to 40 percent. But if they can't meet those requirements, that could be a variance request as well, that they get to cover more of their PACA than the 40 percent that's currently allowed. It's hard to, you know, every time we tackle how to do this, we run into the problem of how do you blanket ordinances to cover everybody as fairly as possible without doing an individual zone code, zone code for each lot in the city, because they're just all so different.
Yeah, I think each, each one would have to be treated individually. But that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Berwin. Robin?
Ted, any questions of staff?
Yes, I do. I'm going to go back to, because you and I talked about this, number nine on the Norco Hills specific plan. And originally, when that was developed in 1990, and those flat, flat pads were only 12,000 square feet, correct?
Actually, in the original...
In the original one, yes.
They didn't have any flat pad requirements. In Amendment One, which is up along Norco Hills Road, those were required to have 12,000 square foot pads. But the original one, they didn't have a pad requirement, a flat pad.
And so there's, that's why there's so many that don't have an animal. Okay. And then when they, when you changed it later on, when the amendment came in for the other housing tract, those flat pads went to 18,000 square feet, right? And that's in the other section, LMD3 for those. I don't know. And so, but there's only currently, what, how many lots on the Norco specific hills that have animal keeping or areas? 30 or so?
There's, I don't remember the exact number. There's between 30 and 35 that are not allowed any animals because of the topography, and they don't have any flat pad area.
Okay, all right. So let me go up to number eight. And this goes back to Berwin's question on the PACAs. Because I live on, I have a PACA, so I'm concerned of the elevation. And we have terraced lots up there. So, yeah, a large building in my PACA, if I put, chose to put one up, it would, I am 10 feet higher than the neighbor behind me. And then, at the same time, I'm 10 feet higher than the neighbor west of me. And of course, I'm 10 feet lower than the neighbor on the east side. So, the guy on the east side wouldn't see it, because he'd probably see the roof, but he wouldn't see, but before that. Now, to couple on there, and I'm asking this because you won't be able to fit, because most of those lots are designed to drain from rear to front. And the restrictions being put, because you have that, you couldn't get anything in there on those lots, really. You couldn't, you start putting your setbacks back, and you won't be able to get even an 18 foot or even your, if you put eight, you still got five feet, but still, you got a 10 foot barn, you start pushing it away. And most of the PACAs are 30 feet, correct, the width up there?
That's probably true. The minimum requirement is 20 feet on a side, but there, most of them are about 30, minimum, or on the shortest side of the...
Well, according to municipal code, it's 30, has to be a minimum of 30 feet wide. And so, and then, the other point on this thing, would any of these changes prevent what we currently have under 18.13.11, that also requires the PACAs to have the driveways, the accessible route, right, 15 foot wide?
Correct.
And so that, so that would still be there, and they have to have it so they can access it?
Correct.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page on that one. As far as the maximum height, I'm still trying to, on the large animal keeping shelter, are currently where, what we've agreed upon on the accessory building was just 18 feet, correct? The non-animal keeping ones?
No, it's 18 feet on the, on the workshop, or on the RV building.
On the RV buildings.
And then it, it currently is 20 feet on the large animal keeping building.
Okay. I'm just trying to look at consistency and trying to help people out, so it's all the same. But that's, you mentioned the variance. And you said it was state requirements on a variance versus a CUP?
Correct.
And we'll go back to the PAC issue. If I wanted to build a barn in my PACA, and I had the setbacks for that, because the variance is controlled by state, that makes it harder? Or can we as a city, and John's probably got it correct, can we do anything on a variance for a situation like that where those could be done on a case by case basis?
Well, a variance is done on a case by case basis, by definition. Just that the statute of government code sets out what the findings you have to make in order to grant a variance. The purpose is so that you know, establish special benefits for one property as opposed to the one next door. Essentially, it's a function of, is there something that's so unique about the specific property that the normal rules, which govern all the properties, shouldn't apply to that property?
And that part I understand, because we've done, when I was on planning commission, we did variances for certain homeowners that their lots were irregular shaped or just strange. But this, the PACAs are something that the city created for this housing area, and those houses up there, and the Norco Ridge Ranch. Is that, would that fit into that criteria?
There's no real answer to that, because it's lot by lot. I mean, if you wanted to, and maybe it might be more appropriate, if you wanted to address the PACA variance issue, you might want to take a look at the PACA ordinance and amend that so it can be addressed in that way.
I'm just trying to make this as consistent as possible, so when someone comes in and sees, here's the accessory building rules, and then, but if you live up here, you know, we do allow certain things. And I'm just...
Yeah, the difficulty is that you can't generalize about a variance, that it's specific as to the property and the findings or statutory. And, you know, probably the thing that nobody really wants to hear, that there are potentially going to be lots where you can't build accessory buildings, period.
Enough of that. Okay, thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
Kevin?
Do they have any questions? Just, it's interesting, that development, I think, Berwin, you were around in 90, weren't you? I was with Barbara Carmichael, who walked up there, and she said, gee, I didn't know how to read the squiggly lines. And she was shocked when she saw the stuff like that. And what are you going to do? It's, they didn't realize that they weren't flat lots. The council thought they were flat lots. So now you have the problem that you're dealing with, and that's really where it came from. I have some questions for later. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. I'll try to keep this as a question. I have plenty of discussion points. Going back to the PACA, okay, on that deed restriction, what we're proposing with this ordinance is, and I mean PACA only, not the rest of a, a specific plan property, that animal keeping building would be subject to graduated setbacks?
Yes.
Okay. And today, on our PACAs as they exist, you can have 40 percent coverage for an animal keeping structure. And what would be the, what are the setbacks that exist today within that 40 percent?
Good, currently, the setbacks are five feet from side and rear property lines, and 10 feet from any other building.
Okay. And on PACA only, which, as Norco Ridge Ranch has laid out, or any other subdivisions of property that we've had in town that have PACAs, they're all to the rear of the property?
Correct.
Okay. And I think I'll wait till later, but I can't make the graduated setbacks work on a PACA. Okay, it just, I don't think we're able to build on it. I think most, most everything else I have is for discussion later. Okay. So what I'm going to go...
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Tagged off that. As I understand it, you can build an 864 or 14 foot tall building per 18, what is it, 12, 13, in other words, just for an accessory building. But the moment it goes above 14 feet, the moment it goes past 864, the 40 percent coverage is no longer applicable, and you have to go to 18.45, and based on the impacts to the neighboring properties. That's what they were trying to clear up. 40 percent is not, is not applicable, nor is the five foot setback. It's based on what is the impact to the property.
Well, excuse me, in terms of...
Or the CUP.
Yeah. But in terms of properties that have a PACA, the allowed 40 percent coverage is still applicable. It doesn't go away. The, but you're right, as far as the CUP, it's, it's a case by case analysis, and what the planning commission and staff and its recommendation, what the planning commission has to do with that discretion is look at what the impacts are to the neighboring properties. But the allowed 40 percent coverage doesn't go away in, within the PACA.
Gotcha. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we were all clear on that.
Yeah, Kevin, mine was just specific to the PACA. And, and the minute, just because I know you were a little confused, was the minimum width on a PACA is 30 foot. Okay. So if there's no other questions of staff, I'd like to indicate that the public hearing is open, and then we'll hear if there's any cards on the matter. Once again, I'll ask you to try to keep your comments right at three minutes, or less.
Cheryl?
Chad Pulley.
Okay, good evening again.
Good evening. Yeah, some of the things in the planning commission, one thing I wish I would have got the opportunity to do instead of reapplying, or I wish I would have got able to make the improvements instead of just reapplying. I mean, I applied for this building back in October of last year. I just got my meeting in April. And I was told that I got my meeting, it took so long to get my meeting, because there were so many changes going on with the building codes, and not a lot of people knew what was going on. I, everything I applied for, everything was in reason, everything was on my application, everything fell within the application of the city of Norco. So, same building, not even a block from me, got approved, not even a month ago. So I don't understand why, everything I applied for, I went code, line by line with the city of Norco and the application process. I've heard up here before that the application is broke, and it's being fixed right now. But because of that, $8,000 later out of my pocket, I get denied, and now I have to sit up there and have to reapply, or I appeal the decision of the planning commission. One of the opening statements, one of the planning commission asked Steve, does your applicant, does the applicant know the new rules of the ad hoc committee? I don't understand, yes, I do know the rules, but I'm not under the new rules. There is no new rules. I'm under the rules that I applied for. So I don't know why that comment was made. Does your applicant know the new rules that are coming up? That shouldn't affect me, because I applied October 2016. And I, the simple changes that I need to make on my thing is moving the PACA area, the open animal area, further away from the house. That's a very simple thing. Another thing that they'd like to see it a little bit smaller. Well, I didn't go over legal limit. I went to the size that was on the application of my land. But I got denied. They said they'd like to see it a little smaller. I asked them, well, how small, I didn't go too big. Well, how small do I need to go? And they said, well, we don't have an answer for that. So I wish the planning commission would have worked with me a little bit more, instead of just, after the six months I waited to get, get the planning commission, just to get turned down. And I would like to, I was asked the planning commission, can I work with you? Let's make these simple changes, for I don't have to start back over. And I didn't get that opportunity. Some of the other things are just, there's very small little things that I had to make changes to. And now, either I got to appeal it, or I got to restart back over after waiting over six, seven months, pay the application fee again, which I don't think's fair. I wish I would, I could have just made the small little changes that they wanted me to make, instead of reapplying and have to spend more money out of my pocket, and not even know where that's going to go. I just, I think they should have worked with me a little bit more, instead of just tossing it aside, say, just either reapply or appeal the decision. And that's just more money out of my pocket. I've already, by the request of Norco, I changed my plans three times. In those six months, I made the changes that I was asked to make before going into the planning commission. And still, just more money out of my pocket, and then I didn't get the chance to make more changes that they wanted.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Cahann?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council.
I'm just here tonight as a resident. I understand the purpose of the city and the council is to preserve the character of the community. We have zoning laws that help to decide that this area is going to be commercial, this area is going to be residential. The city voted, what was it, back in 2005, when we last amended the charter, and I know the charter was referenced earlier, but the point is, we're not just a general law city. We're, we're a charter city with a specific focus on being animal keeping. I'm not a horse owner myself. But we moved here because I like the community, I like the atmosphere of the community. And when people say, and I don't mean any disrespect to any other speakers, but when people say I have the right to do whatever I want on my lawn, on my, on my lot, that's really not true. You live in a residential area, you can't put up a commercial business on your lot. You can't drill for oil on your lot. You can't, you know, even though it's residential, I can't build a seven story house. If I wanted to build a load bearing wall, Steve, could I do my beams, you know, 50 inches on center? Probably not. I got to follow the building code. I can't use 18 gauge wire to run my utilities. You know, they've got to be, there's restrictions on every... wire to run my utilities. You know, they've got to be, there's restrictions on everything we do. I get that. I think what's happening is, my understanding, there was just some ambiguities on certain things. There were some specific rules that were not being followed. We're going through a process to try to make things understandable, specific and clear. And when it comes to preserving the character of the community, I think that outweighs, with no disrespect to any individual person, when you look at, I don't know, look at Vegas. If you build in Vegas, it's got to be big, and it's got to be flashy, and it's got to have a lot of lights. That fits there. If you want to go to San Francisco, they've got a different feel. They've got a different culture. They've got a different climate, character of their neighborhood. Norco, we're horsetown USA. We want open space. We want large lots. We don't want them cluttered up. We're trying to preserve the character of the town. You can build accessory buildings. We're just trying to quantify what the exact rules are. And I appreciate the dilemma that you're in, trying to get this sorted out. But I, I'm in support of keeping the character of Norco the way it's been for at least the 50 years that it's been a city. And definitely for the last 12 years that we've had a charter that specifically says that we're looking out for our lifestyle. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Diane Collins.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I apologize, I may be a little off track with my comments tonight, because I was not able to be here at the last meeting. But I've been a resident of Norco for nearly 12 years. And while I didn't move here for the animal keeping lifestyle, I absolutely love it and 100% support it. I choose not to have horses due to the cost and upkeep. I do get to go ride them once in a while. I'll go rent them, whatever. But I truly believe in keeping my property amenable to the possibility of a future owner having their five animal units. With that being said, many people move to Norco to have their animals, but also use their property for additional purposes. We cannot be so restrictive that potential homeowners, homeowners who enjoy their horses but have children or spouses with other interests can't utilize their properties for those other interests. There has to be some flexibility. We moved here because our friends had found their perfect house a few years before. One with the house the mom wanted, a pool for the kids, a shop for dad, and a place for the daughter's horses. That's the perfect Norco. Animal keeping, yes, but more. I think the ordinances that you're considering are too restrictive. You can't legislate every contingency. Even in my little neighborhood, finally known as the Peninsula, where nearly all of the lots are uniform halfish acres, I have a hard time imagining a set of rules such as what you're proposing that would work on all of the lots, or even a majority of them. And enforcing the rules is a major concern. Like so many other things here, rules keep getting made and they're not enforced. The subject of being good neighbors was mentioned repeatedly in the last council meeting, and I agree with the concept, absolutely. And the required notification to neighbors about proposed accessory building answers that. My neighbor wanted to put a 20-foot corrugated metal wall building right next to my patio, where I spent a beautiful Norco afternoon studying this issue. I would have the opportunity to speak about it, and hopefully the planning commission would hear what I had to say. But even with that, the current rules prevent a 20-foot tall corrugated metal, metal wall right next to my patio, so I shouldn't have to worry about it. Another concern I do have is with the increasing setback connected to the height of a building. It looks good on paper, but if my neighbor ever wants to build their RV garage, I want it right up against the fence. Otherwise, it blocks my view. That's the way our lots happen to be. My biggest concern with the proposed ordinances is that you're trying to make a few rules to cover a multitude of possibilities. I don't agree with the three types of buildings. One is for RV equipment parking, one for large animal keeping, and one for everything else. There's too much overlap to make such distinctions. Plus, what a building you use for today may change tomorrow. I could own an RV today, build a garage, then sell the RV, start a hobby. All of a sudden, my RV garage is a workshop or a barn. The simplicity of limiting the amount of lot coverage, making one set of rules for all accessory buildings as far as size and appearance, ensuring that we don't have a bunch of airplane hangars, that the placement is conducive to animal keeping on that specific lot, and that staff and the planning commission both know the rules and follow them, that makes sense. Trying to create cookie cutter requirements that cover all of the many, many differences in our property's dozen. I urge you to look for a better, simpler solution. This isn't the right one.
Thank you.
Daniel Cislik. Scott Koch.
Evening again, council. I didn't get to make the meeting last week. I was out of town. And I got to watch part of it, not all of it. But these, these codes need work. You guys have brought up many, many issues. This shouldn't have even become in front of council for a first reading yet. This needs to be sent back to some kind of committee, some kind of joint venture between the commission, the council. I mean, that happened. And now all these issues come up after the fact. The graduated setbacks, they don't work for many, many, many properties in Norco, not just PACA-required properties. You know, you come into my neighborhood, buildings are placed in the rear corner of lots. Because if you were to use these graduated setbacks, it places that building in the middle of a lot. When you place that middle, building in the middle of a lot, which will be allowed by this code, you effectively ruin that property for animal keeping in the future. Where the way the code is now, I can put that building in the corner of the lot, and the rest of my three-quarters of that lot is animal keeping versus smackdown in the middle. You know, when those graduated setbacks were proposed, I think it was Steve King that proposed it. And yet, the setbacks are greater than if I were to buy an empty lot in any of these areas and build a two-story house. You know, the setbacks on that is much less than what these are for an animal keeping area, or for a accessory building. The issue of the bathrooms was brought up, 30 square feet, an RV, you know, can house 30 square feet. Have you ever used a 30-square-foot in an RV that commodes in the shower? You know, you look at this desk right here, about the first three seats in it would be 30 squeet, 30 square feet. To have a commode and a sink, that's not a whole lot of room. A four-by-eight sheet applied, which is 32 square feet. You know, go walk down the hall to the handicap-accessible stall. I haven't measured it, but I have a feeling it's bigger than 30 square feet. And that's not counting a sink. You know, so these, these things need to be addressed. They need to be addressed properly. They need to be sent back to a proper ad hoc committee that includes residents that are not city-paid staff, whether it be council or commission members. It needs to include volunteer residents that are not paid, that do not have an agenda based on the person that assigned them to a seat. Just please, please, consider not voting on this and voting this into law, and send it back for more work. You put people that are residents on that commission, on the, on an ad hoc committee, you're going to have issues that get brought up. People that find loopholes and enjoy finding a loophole in a property to apply the new rules. I asked flat out during the ad hoc commissions, have you applied these rules that you have made up to any particular property in town? And I had one ad hoc commission member say they had applied it to their own, which had already had several buildings on the property. No one else even applied them to any specific lot, other than just general ideas. They threw it a wall to see if they would stick. Send it back to a proper commission. Do your homework. Do a good job on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Leach.
Hello again. Hi. What Scott said is true. They have manipulated my son-in-law's property. And he has a 2,000-square-foot building going up. And Mr. Bash didn't want it close to his property, so they moved it. And I walked in the backyard, the backyard is 19,000 square feet after the backyard. He has a home, a front yard, the home, and a backyard. And he has 19,000 square foot. He's putting a 2,000-square-foot building up. It looks huge now. The footprint for the building is, it has grown because of where they've situated the building. Like, like you said, you're shooting yourself in the foot. When you're, if it's put in one corner or this corner, you leave a much larger animal keeping area. My property has 3,300 square foot of animal keeping. And I have a 1,500-square-foot building, which you have essentially said now is illegal. You know, I haven't put it up yet. I had issues with my health. So now, you know, I'm the one that came up with the idea of combining two of the buildings and making it a little bit bigger. So they come up with 1,400 square foot. I think that's kind of coincidental that they knew I had a 1,500-square-foot building. So now my thinking is, sell the damn thing, put up a 1,000-square-foot shop, and an 800 square foot. Now you're going to eat up a larger area of the backyard. Even though I still have my PACA, I still have my access to the PACA, for future people, if there is ever a future person that lives there, it, it, it's going to take up a lot more of the backyard. It just doesn't seem like you thought this out. You know, be practical. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Betsy Roberts.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm speaking in opposition to modifying the regulations for the accessory buildings that's under the ordinance in discussion. I realize there's been lots of discussion regarding the issues, and that's very evident by the comments tonight from those who've been in attendance at prior meetings, as well as staff, as well as your questions. I've lived in Norco since 1983, on the old side of town, raised our daughters here. We used to have lots of animals, 4-H and so forth. At the present time, I don't live in the Norco Ridge Ranch specific plan area. I no longer have the animals housed on my property. I have no plans on adding an accessory building in the near future. However, at the end of the day, it comes down to property rights and having fewer regulations versus too many regulations. Lots of folks, at least when we moved here, moved here because they didn't want HOAs or the additional rules and regulations, and how you needed to trim your lawn and so forth. So unless there's public health and safety involved, it seems that with the proposition that's on the table, first of all, really reconsider, you've had some questions, your own tonight, as to, which are very valid. If anything were to occur, it seems like voting not to approve tonight, regrouping, as some of the other comments have made, to go back with some additional comment, and really look at what is really indicated versus a cookie cutter approach that's really not going to solve the problem. Because if you have oversight of the existing ordinances, folks shouldn't be putting up these buildings that don't belong, or not following the guidance of placement and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott DeRosa.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. First, I just want to squeeze in a real quick thank you for the stop signs on Second and Hillside, because I feel much safer driving my kids through that intersection now. Accessory buildings. Let me say, first of all, that I have the highest regard and respect for you folks for what you have to do, and trying to find that happy medium for all residents in Norco. I know it's very challenging. And I know that you folks truly try to do the best that you can, with the best of intentions for the city as well as its residents. And with all these setbacks and everything that are being discussed about the accessory buildings, as a local real estate broker, I can appreciate the need for those things to be in place, and buildings to be put in their proper locations, so not to impact value for neighboring property, properties. Because if you have large buildings to the side of you, that are a visual nightmare, for lack of a better word, it does impact the value of the neighboring property if they should want to sell, because potential buyers will be focused on that. But the purpose of me coming up here tonight was not so much to be talking about that, but since accessory buildings are being discussed, I wanted to bring attention to used prefab modular buildings such as horse barns. I know several people in, residents that have purchased those and relocated them to their properties. And the current coding requires that those buildings go through a approval process with structural engineering and so forth. That's virtually impossible to get one of those buildings through without it being a huge, tens of thousands of dollars of an investment. So I'm requesting that, while all this is being discussed and thought about, that those buildings, which a lot of residents do purchase and, and relocate and set up in their yards for their horses or et cetera, that there be flexibility with the guidelines of those being built. Perhaps if they're built in a workmanship fashion, that they don't have to go through structural engineering processes and everything that they most definitely won't pass. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Dixon.
Good evening. Just a quick side note. The city charter is on the city website. I just pulled it up on my phone. Just go to the city website under the city council. It says, we are a charter city. Click on that, and it comes up. Very easy. A lot of the people that wanted to be here tonight could not, because as we all know, we're a city of volunteers. And we have quite a few of them up, setting up for horse weeks. So we're missing a lot of people. What I wanted to discuss is the fact that most cities in our United States have ordinances, zoning regulations, rules, whatever. We're no exception. We are a charter city. We need to follow our charter. No matter what we do, we need to follow the charter or change the charter. Used to, when we bought the homes, and we are a four-generation Norconian family, when we bought our homes, our realtors informed us that the rules and regulations, what we could and couldn't do. Go down to the city, the water department, sign up. They had a list of rules and regulations of what you can and cannot do. That's not the case now. And I understand why realtors, such as just spoke, are against this, because it's much easier for them to say, bring the toys, than bring your animals. There's room for both. We don't have to all be animal keeping. We need to tweak this now, make sure it's what is suitable for a lot of the residents. We can't all have our own ways. Not everybody is going to be happy. We can't all go home with blue ribbons. But I will tell you this, as a charter city, our charter leans towards animal keeping. That's why the majority of the people here moved in, except for the last few years. And I can see why they moved here. But we have to stick to the charter. We have to stick to the rules and regulations, ordinance, zoning of our city, or we die. We become just like any other city. And if that's what we want, then go ahead and vote that way. We've become an entitled society. And while I believe in property rights, I also believe in the way it was. We looked out for our neighbors. We did what was right for the city as a whole, and not just I, 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 and me, me, me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lance Gregory.
Evening, Lance.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council, staff. You know, I've expressed my displeasure in, in government overreach pretty loudly since 2010 on private property. I have horses. I have toys. I have an RV. I have a PACA. I don't have an accessory building. I don't need an accessory building. I don't want one. But that doesn't mean that my neighbors shouldn't be able to have one. I'm all preserving, all for preserving animal keeping for future generations, and them enjoying the properties. But as I pointed out, 6% of the homes up in the hills have horses on their properties, add 537 homes. 70% of the new buyers are not buying for animal keeping. And this is why, when I ran for council, I encourage that we welcome these residents, accept them, start showing them what it's like to have animals on their property. Hopefully, that'll encourage them to get animals. But the more that we try to restrict these folks, the more they're going to turn against you. And if you look at history, at every other equestrian community, that's exactly what's happened. The numbers eventually will turn on you. So if we want to have everybody, you know, and get them to into the community, that's the best way to do it. Get them to volunteer and welcome them. In looking at these, these ordinances, I think what we have to do is just really take our time- time on these things, make some fair changes that are equitable to all. You're not going to make everybody happy, but initially, these ordinance were really lopsided towards animal keeping, and I was opposed to that. And that's why we asked them to really look at the sizes, the bathrooms, all that kind of stuff. If there's really problems here, if the application process is broke, then fine, fix the application process. If residents are filling out themselves, and that's not what they're supposed to be doing, fine, fix that. My problem is code enforcement. Mr. Bash, you've pointed out several times now, the Bluffs does not have two-story homes. I see a heck of a lot of two-story homes over there. What is the city doing about that? Nothing, because they can't do it, they don't have the time to do it. How are you going to go back after those folks and do stuff about those buildings? You don't have the staff, the city is known not to enforce those codes, and all you're going to do is start making more codes that you're not going to be able to enforce. The current ordinance, as it sits, protects animal keeping. You have a whole process. You go in with ARC, you do site plans, you do a public hearing, everything. If it doesn't fit, you don't approve it. You had 75 CUPs pulled in the last eight years. And when I sat here and listened to it, staff got berated for allowing those to pass. Well, council was at fault, because you guys approved the planning minutes. So ultimately, it was your fault if those weren't supposed to be passed. So, you know, I can go on and on, but, I mean, let's just really take our time on this thing. No rush to pass it tonight. Think it out, and let's do the right thing by all.
Thank you.
Jody Webber.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hello again, Jody.
Just to clarify my position, as I had stated earlier, oh, sorry. Am my time clicking away?
No, no, no.
Okay.
He has to make a grand exit.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
As you are aware, I am an attorney. And so with that, and as I had stated before, I understand there are purposes of zoning laws, ordinances. There is in every society, and city, and county, and state, a reasonable limitation with ordinances. You have to place restrictions on properties. When I moved here, I was well aware of the restrictions that were placed on my property. The comments that I've made were not about allowing people to do whatever they want to do on their property. That's not the point. And I just get so dissatisfied with misunderstandings in this community regarding what has happened since, what was it, 2010, when we talked about the CUP previously? This is about equality, because what you have here is a circumstance in which you are actually allowing for greater, larger buildings, as long as they are conducive to animal keeping. So you take a 20-foot-high, 1,000-plus-square-foot building in one location, and call it a barn. But yet, if I even built or tried to build a 15-foot or a 10-foot building, 1,000 square feet, or 900 square feet, you're saying, and I want to use it as a sewing room, or a hobby shop. I can't do that under these regulations. So it's not about allowing anybody to do whatever they want to do. It's equality, because the charter doesn't exist to actually state that you are to only allow animal keeping, or structures conducive to animal keeping, solely to the exclusion of any other use. I'm only talking about freedom of use. So please, I'm just asking you to reconsider that if you want to talk about equality. I won't reiterate those comments. I would like to actually go to what was on the agenda and what was agendized tonight. So item number one, as to the open areas as rural characteristics on lots are defined by PACAs. The comment on the agenda indicates that the city council needs to give direction on what other open area requirements or definitions should be considered in the open area of an individual lot. Because, and it also says, "In addition to what you've already defined as a PACA." For those properties that already have PACAs, you already have definitions under 18.13.11. There are no other additional guidance you should give to staff to further restrict a PACA. You already have it. So I'm assuming what they mean here is you need guidance as to what's defined as open area on those properties that don't involve PACAs. Number three, as to the 20-foot maximum height determination for animal keeping building, that's what I had alluded to earlier. Whatever the limit is that you set, it should be applied equally regardless of use. So I recognize that there does have to be restrictions, and Councilmember Hoffman, you had stated that you wanted it to be consistent. So please be consistent and fair with use. And one other thing, real quickly. Item number eight, you should exclude the setbacks on PACAs, because as Mr. King had stated, the standards for a variance are very difficult to get. So that would mean you're even putting even greater restrictions on individuals with PACAs, who have to actually ask for a variance, because we already have open, rural, animal keeping, preserved on our lots, as a restriction that exists with the land that I knew about when I bought the property, and I fully respect it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Thompson.
Good evening again, council. Let me start with the 31 residents that asked me to deliver their notes for them tonight. They just want, again, you to relook at the whole thing. A lot of the concern was the way the plan was labeled with the recreation, agricultural, animal keeping, and everything else. So, you know, what you get out of that, that's a large group going there. So by your own concerns of 1 through 9, that Steve talked about, and your questions that you ask, it seems to me that you guys have enough concerns and questions, that this should go back, like was said earlier, to some sort of a more of a workshop, discussion, ad hoc, whatever you want to call it. And it should be done right. I don't think you want to get this to where it's a bone of contention at election time, where, when it's election time, you're going to get attacked from people that don't like what's being proposed on building codes. And I just think if you make the right moves now, and the thing's done properly, granted, everybody's not going to be happy. But if we can get things to more of an even keel, for everybody's purposes, that would be a good move on your part. Now, the, one more thing I had, was in regards to Mr. Polley. Our strategic plan talks about all the things, customer service and all, that go along with dealing with our citizens and the public. I can't understand what happened. Why is he where he is today with the Architecture Overview Committee? That goes back to what Lance said earlier. I mean, this is only gone, this, you guys have been working on this ad hoc committee for how long? And he's been going through the process? And he's gotten to the Planning Commission without any direction on architecture, or height, or size? Unbelievable. I don't think we're following our strategic plan, and he's a perfect example. So, again, you guys, I think you need to put this aside and put more work into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Overstreet.
Well, again, Mr. Mayor and council. Well, I was taking notes while Mr. King was talking. I counted 21 items that you want to consider. You know, the bottom line for me is, as a 39-year resident, I want you to preserve the rural atmosphere and the animal keeping, open spaces much as possible throughout the town. We don't have cookie cutter lots. That's always a statement I made about Norco. We're unique. I love the fact that it's so quirky. I love driving the back streets and just seeing how quirky we are. So maybe the easiest bottom line also would be, regardless of heights, and setbacks, and all this other stuff, and lot placement, and massing, just limit accessory buildings, if they want one, to 1,000 square feet. They can have a very nice, large accessory building, and it's not an airplane hangar. So I think that's what you should consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Long.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. By the way, I own an airplane, and I also have a barn. If I took pictures of the hangar and the picture of my barn, my breezy-lay barn, from the back, you wouldn't be able to tell them apart. It's that simple. Anyway, when I first signed out about all this, because I'd been waiting, working about 30 years, trying to get the money together to build this building, I was pretty upset. And I'm still not real happy, but after 30-some years in law enforcement, I've come to realize that thousands of disputes, calls over neighborhood stuff that I've gone to, I've come to realize that what you really need to do is rely on the way the law works, the way the courts work, and the way we work. And the key to that is reasonable. It's just that simple. I think you got a good structure going here. I have no problem with you limiting the size of these buildings to a certain degree. You have kind of a good core here that seems to make sense. I don't know why you need a barn 20-foot-high, but hey, whatever. Anyway, when you tell me that because I want to build a wood shop, that my house isn't big enough, the footprint isn't big enough for me to go to the 864 square feet, because you put this little claw in there, or one-third the footprint of your house. Why do I get penalized? Because I don't want to buy a huge mansion? That, to me, is unreasonable. We have building codes, and we have zoning laws. Use those to set the standards of the buildings you're going to build, or people want to Five-foot separation between a building and your horsekeeping area, because let's face it, that's what you're really talking about. Who cares? Five feet, you should be five feet from your building anyway. I'm a horse, I used to be a horse owner. I sure as a windmill my building up against the fence. That's great. But leave it at that, between the building and your horsekeeping area. If they go outside of these general standards that already exist, then you go to your conditional use permit process, and make the people who want to build this come in front of the board, and justify why their property deserves to have this or that, and why it will work, and all of that good stuff. That's what you exist for. Materials. As long as they're using standard building materials, that are compliant with current building codes, that exist, for one reason, one reason only, and that's safety, then leave people alone. There's a difference between a private access, or a private building, or a private property, and property that's public access. You have a right to require whatever you want in the city for building on public access. If you want the storefronts to look with this style, that's fine. My property, I should be able to decide what color paint I put on my house. Western theme was a western theme. I bet you everyone in here has a different opinion. And it shouldn't matter on private property, to a certain degree. Hey, limit to earth tone colors, standard building materials, wood siding, stucco is the one thing I have never seen in a western theme. But hey, my house should not match my building. That should be my choice, not yours. You know, you want to see buildings that match, and all of this good stuff, run on down there to Orange County or wherever. But if you want trails, and you want a rural community, drive around town, they don't match, nor should they.
Thank you.
I'm only about halfway through.
That concludes the comments.
Thank you, Cheryl. Going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and bring this back to council for discussion and action. Who would like to start? I got a list. I wouldn't bother.
I got a list.
Go ahead, Kevin.
All right. So, you know, it's funny, this, birds were brought up, and I can remember sitting in the back over there, and all the, in fact, Bertwin was probably there, I hate to keep picking on you, but maybe Greg was here, too. And the place was packed for people that wanted fighting cocks. And they wanted poultry, and we knew what they were doing. So, of course, they're still doing it. And the thing is, is though, if we had listened, you'd have a town of fighting cocks. That's their right. We didn't listen. I wasn't on council then, I was glad we didn't. In terms of the particular property we're talking about, they're within compliance. And one of the frustrating things is, is that when they're in compliance and not in compliance, just some of the comments that were made, listen to the people, laws, building materials per code, who dictates the code? To a certain degree, how big is that degree? Buildings that match. People that bought in the hills, bought in the Bluffs, most of those two-story buildings were built before I got on council. But the point is, is that people bought in neighborhoods where the houses match. Paid a lot of money to do that. Loss of value. I can think of a place right now that built a gigantic building, and next door, the house has been devalued to $200,000. And this last weekend, it had 15 cars parked around it, and they had the little cages with the fighting cocks in them. That's how your neighborhood dies. I don't think anybody here wants that. In terms of some of the comments about animal keeping, I feel bad somebody thinks that. What I've always said is that equestrian animal keeping is what protects the large lots. If we keep going down the road we're going down, you will not have the large lots. I know some of you don't believe that, but history tells us that. Mr. Gregory made a very, very good point. Eventually, what happens is, the people that want the large buildings, or whatever, will outnumber the people that don't. We're the last ones. In terms of the other comment, I don't just want to protect people's animal keeping rights, I want to protect their views. Law says I can't, but guess what? We're trying to find a way to protect your views. Rewriting of the code. Part of the problem that we have here, obviously, is that every time you go outside the charter, and you go, "Well, that guy built it," once you know, as a councilperson, you're really not allowed to rewrite the code. And we've known for six months that there's a problem. Hillside Development. Convert your RV. Now, my understanding is, in our discussion, if you build an RV garage and decide to put a, I mean, it's a question, Steve, if you build an RV garage and you decide to put a shop in there, are you allowed to put the shop in there? My understanding is you are. I think the one resident's point to use is valid.
That's correct, to the extent that you don't have to get a building permit to change the interior of the structure. It goes back to, since 2010, we've been talking about the, I forgot the name of the horse, or the movie.
Sea Biscuit.
There you go.
Sea Biscuit.
Where you don't have the animals anymore, so you use it for parking vehicles in. That's a lot of.
But then you have the ones where they put the lift in there, or you put in a professional business, then you have a problem. Rely on law? Trust me, I'd love to rely on the law. We wouldn't be sitting here if we relied on the law. But you know what? You're a cop, I come from a cop family, and you know cops that rewrite the law all the time. Happens all the time. When a speeder goes by, they go, "Well, I'll let that guy go by." I mean, it happens all the time. And so what we're trying to do is figure out a way to codify this. We are a charter, I don't mean to pick on you, sir, I really don't.
Councilman has the floor right now.
I wish it was simple. Trust me, I really wish it was simple. One of the things we tend to forget is that zoning laws were instituted because wealthy people would do whatever they wanted against people who didn't have money. We didn't used to have zoning laws. And so we have a lot of people here that just don't understand that they are hurting their neighbors. That is happening. One of the things we have in the city of Norco by design is we don't have cookie cutter lots. I'm real, you know what? If you buy a lot that is smaller than your neighbor's lot, should you be allowed to put a gigantic building on that lot the same as somebody else? Some people would say, "Yeah." I personally disagree. I think you need to look and see what's going to happen to your neighbors. And I think that's what they're trying to do. A lot of people said, "Oh, we don't want airplane hangars." Point was made, an airplane hangar An airplane hangar is in the eye of the beholder. Graduated setbacks. Again, how does it affect your neighbor? You know, unfortunately, the neighbors in this entire process were totally kicked out of this process. One of the things that keeps being said is, "Well, the neighbor will be listened to." Well, then what? What rights do they have? "Ah, you know what? It's going to kill my gardener, it's going to do this, or it's going to do that, or it's too big, or it's going to devalue my property value." HOA, I don't know. In terms of the buildings, your point's very well taken, but I've listened for a long time. The problem is, a lot of people put up these big modular buildings and they blow away. We just had the last windswee, I mean, there's been times where these buildings are put up, they're put up illegally, and they blow into people's homes. I mean, we have a 90 mile an hour wind requirement. Building materials per code, again, I mean, it's a difficult situation because you want to protect people's property rights. And then you add to that the LMDs and the PACAs. We're trying to protect a way of life that is seriously in jeopardy. And if you're right, Mike, guess what? Maybe it's gone. Congratulations. We did it. And it's just really, really sad, because that, look at the different cities that allow these buildings to come in on large lots. And you will see they begin to get cut up, you will see properties next to them are become devalued and people don't want to buy them. What's the difference between a building that's 20 feet high, five feet from a fence line, and a bunch of fighting cocks? What's the difference? Not much. Not much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. See, in the city of Norco, they're both legal, in terms of if you can prove they're not fighting cocks, that they're showbirds.
Ted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking around and what occurred in 2010, it was the attempt to curtail the large accessory buildings that were propping up all over town. And it was known in 2010 that it had to be fixed, because the 40% lot coverage was a good start. But I was on planning commission for almost four years, and that's where I found out the CUP process is not the right process to use in for accessory buildings in neighborhoods. It's not designed for that. It's designed for commercial application in residential neighborhoods. During this process, and I'm looking at, because everybody was commenting about, you know, use the rules that we have, well, unfortunately, the rules aren't, weren't being followed, or the rules don't apply what the application did. The applicant would turn in a sheet for the CUP, but staff had to rewrite it. Because if you, if planning commission saw it, they probably wouldn't have approved it anyway, what was being done, what was being turned in. Because I wouldn't expect any of you here, I mean, the CUPs are very intricate and very complex, and it takes somebody the right information, you'd have to pay for that information to be filled out completely. But unfortunately, the planning commission wasn't even getting the CUP applications. And they're in the approval process. They do now, because we've changed this. They're getting it. They're making qualified decisions. But here we are, we're still getting big metal buildings built. This isn't anything about trying to ruin your property rights. What this is, is trying to be consistent through what we do, and what we have, and we'll keep what we have. In part of the ad hoc committee's decision-making, what we did was we looked for discretionary and non-discretionary options. So, a lot of that stuff that you see that, okay, I don't like this, I don't want to care for that, on the commissions, that would be eliminated. You'd be, as a applicant, you would look at it and say, "Oh, I have to do this, or I can't do this." Those are what you have. That's discretionary, non-discretionary. And that takes away, that already tells you when you're going in there, what you can and can't do. And that's why we divided it in three different things, because not all buildings are the same. An RV garage is different. We're giving you 1,000 square feet. The largest footprint for an RV that you can drive on California highways takes up less than 600 square feet. A two-car garage, the extra 400 feet attached to it, is about the size of a two-car garage. And then the horse thing is based upon the UC Davis study. And I'm going through all this, as far as materials on the outside, you know, I shared with Councilman Bash the history of a red barn. "Why do we have red barns?" It was done, they never painted, farmers never painted their barns before. They used good wood, didn't have to. Then somebody said, "Well, we'll use inferior wood." How do we paint it? Well, there was no paint. They created their own paint. Had a skim milk, iron oxide, and that's what they threw on their buildings. That's why it was red, because they used iron oxide. That's why you have a red barn. Then later on, they put linseed oil, and then comes the chemical evolution. But that's why there were red barns. It was no fancy deal. I grew up on a dairy. And when you talk to me there's no rules, California Dairy Association, State of California Health Thing, they dictated what your property had and how you can maintain it. It was a business, you're right, but it was also my home, because our houses, we lived there. But those are the rules. There are rules. And they dictated what you can and can't do all the time, and how to maintain it. I think what we underuse here in our approval process over this time was the Architect Review Committee. On a lot of these problems that we have, these nine items, I think that if we look at it and bid better use of the ARC, that a lot of these problems wouldn't have occurred. And the fact that as long as we have those discretionary, non-discretionary items, that where you were allowed to build your metal building, and you had it so that you could have your animal keeping too. But you can't block, and that's what we had problems with. People would say, "Well, my animal keeping is going to be right in front of my barn, where I'm going to drive my RV into." Doesn't make any sense. But that's what we had to approve because of the 40% lot coverage and the lack of these other rules that was going on. There you go. That's it, Mayor, thank you. Oh, on the materials. We've come a long way in manufacturing and buildings. I'm good if a guy wants to paint the same color or get a decent color, it doesn't have to be all the same material. We worked, when I was on planning commission, we worked with a gentleman, has a house right down from me. He wanted this great big metal building, and guess what? He turned it, he turned his airplane hangar into a little smaller, but he had to do it because he cut into his PACA. But at the same time, he just painted it the same color as his house, put some nice trim on it, it doesn't look that bad. But it isn't massive and huge. And that's what we, and the ad hoc committee, what we were trying to avoid is these great big, large buildings. And that's why we came up with the numbers we did. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Berwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, about two or three years before I got on council, I used to ride all over town here, and I got to noticing all these big buildings that were taking up the animal keeping property. And I brought it to the, I think Greg was on the planning commission, and I brought it to the planning commission, and then we brought it to the council and started trying to do something about it. But I still go around now and I look at all these places and how these huge buildings, there's no animals there. There'll never be animals on there, on most of them, because there's not going to be room for the next person. And I think it's time that we put a limit on the size of these buildings, make it, make it, we're not, we don't look like, every backyard don't look like a truck depot because of the extra tall buildings and huge, huge buildings. But some of these issues that we have here, the summary, the materials, I still say that if you're going to put up a building, I've never seen this material that they talk about that is metal with stucco on it. I just, I think that a person ought to be able to build, use whatever kind of material that is acceptable on there, but just paint it the same color as your house. Don't put a restriction on there where you have to have a certain type on there to match it. The number eight, the graduated setback, I don't think that should be required on PACA. Like I said, those lots with the PACAs on them, the most of them are different sizes, they're too, a lot of them are too narrow to begin with, and if the PACA is usually at the back end of the property, if they have a horse set up already sitting there, and a lot of them not going to have room to put a big building on there. I think we ought to do away with that number eight on there, totally. And on number nine, Steve, we talked about the grading in the Norco Hill specific plan. I still don't understand how you could put a building up there if you're not allowed to grade on it. The, I know there's been some illegal grading on the deal. Kevin brought up some about 10, 12 years ago, two houses were built on top of a hill that was graded off that wasn't supposed to be graded, but they slipped through the cracks, and they're up there, and you can see them from the freeway, and he brought that up. But that grading was supposed to be restricted up there then, and I think that if, we need to go back and look at this on number nine before anybody gets a permit to put up a building, they're going, they're going to have to get a grading permit and an engineer's certificate and all that. But my main concern is the size of those buildings, and then on PACA, I think those are already restricted enough up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Berwin. Robin?
Thank you. So, a couple of things I wanted to start out with. Since I've been on council, at some points in time, it's been kind of disappointing, the lack of involvement of our residents. And I can honestly say on this particular issue that the number of emails and phone calls and the attendance at the meetings for this issue have given me a little bit of hope that people still care what happens in this town, regardless of what side of the issue that you're on. That does, as a government teacher and somebody that works with our youth, it gives me some hope that people are not so discouraged with their government and the way that we work slowly most of the time, that your input and your involvement in the process is still valued and still important. So, thank you for that. The second part of that would be that we all care, all of us that sit here. We obviously have sometimes different passions and different ways of expressing that, but hopefully everyone in this room would know that all of us that sit up here don't do it for the money, or any sense of self-servingness, I would hope, but that we're here for the residents, and we're here for all residents, and take our jobs very seriously. So, with that being said, I'm going to go back to the boat for just a little bit, and my boat analogy from last meeting. For those of you that weren't here, didn't get to watch the video, I talked about the fact that in 2010, our council built a boat to weather the storm of these accessory buildings, the large metal buildings. And the fact was that the boat worked for a period of time. In my opinion, the issue was that we never checked on the boat, we never did any maintenance on the boat, and we just left it out there. And so now what we're doing is we've brought the boat back in, and we need to do some work on it. When we look at what work needs to be done on the boat, and again, this is in my opinion, I've kind of broken it down into four kind of categories. The first one is size of these buildings, and I think most of us can agree on that particular issue. The second thing that we need to work on or do some maintenance on is the aesthetics of the buildings. The third is the uses, and the fourth is the views of our neighbors and ourselves. So, if we kind of, for me, encapsulated the issues and concerns, that's what I've found in reading emails from residents and going through paperwork. So, what kind of maintenance, or what kind of patches, or what do we need to do to work on our boat? The first one that, again, and these are just my ideas, is we kind of need to work on our motor a little bit, and the engine, and in specifically the rudder, the direction, and the thing that helps us with direction. And I think any of you that have watched council meetings and planning, have attended planning commissions, our rudder's been kind of all over the place. And it's not any one person's fault. I think if you've watched videos and you've followed this particular dilemma through the process, it's been a lack of clarity, it's been a lack of understanding of current codes, it's been a lack of understanding of enforcement. And again, this will lead me to the second thing, what do we need to do to fix the boat? We need to have more stringent code enforcement of what we already have in place. That goes to budget issues and a whole long list of other things we could talk about, but I think code enforcement is an issue that would probably patch up the boat pretty well and make it seaworthy again. The next thing that, when we look at the aesthetics or the materials, would be a more proactive and clear and concise use of our Architectural Review Committee, and I know I'm not the first one to say that this evening. And then the last thing that I believe would help is that we need to make sure that once the guidelines are established, there's no exceptions. There's no, there's just no exceptions. Everybody in this town is equal. Everybody should be treated the same. It doesn't matter if in your building you're going to keep a boat, or a welder, or a saw, or a goat, or whatever it is. A building is a building, and we should not be in the business of policing what people keep in their buildings, unless it is a health and safety issue, which then goes back to code enforcement. So, that's kind of where I'm at with my thought process. There's been a lot of work by the ad hoc committee that's gone in, and some of the speakers said it's a good base, it's a good foundation, but it's not right, it needs to be tweaked, and I agree with that. My other concern is, though, how long do we want to drag this out? I feel like the longer it gets drug out, the more divisive it is for our community. And I've seen some of that already, and that's disappointing. So, on both hands, you know, there's been a lot of involvement, there's been a lot of passionate discussion, but it tends to bring some divisiveness as well, which concerns me. So, I think if we can come to the table and meet in the middle and understand that all of us have hobbies and all of us also enjoy having our animals and meet in the middle, that that would be the best, and then our boat can go out on its merry little way.
That's it for now? Okay. Well, there's two different directions I'd like to go here. We also have to address a summary of issues that need additional city council direction. And... And so, but I also have some comments that maybe answer some of those. So, but let's try to get a consensus and move through this summary first and see if there is a consensus. On item number one was what other open area requirements or definitions should be considered in the open area of an individual lot? And my opinion on that is there aren't any. So if you have any other comments to that item, just throw them out.
Well, I think our, I think one of the things we need to look at is what it says in the municipal code, where it talks about open areas contiguous between lots and within reason. I'm not sure exactly what that means. Maybe what needs to happen is we need to tweak or look at that to really determine what that definition means, because that's something that's throughout the entire municipal code.
And I agree, but just said what other open area or definitions.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing. I mean, maybe we need to define that, define what we mean by contiguous open space. I brought that up before. A lot of people think it's just the PACA, but when you read that municipal code and you apply it to the charter, it may mean, and I think it means a whole lot more, but I think it's one of those things that needs to be defined.
Go ahead, or, go ahead, Ted, first.
Steve, what definition do you currently use for it?
Well, the, it depends on, um, depends on if you're looking at it in a global sort of way, or if you're looking at it at a site-specific way. The, uh, the intent and purpose throughout the municipal code and the general plan is the preservation of open areas and open spaces for the recreational and equestrian enjoyment of the community. I don't, I don't know that we have anywhere in the code where it actually defines what that, the definition of that is on an individual lot. I can't recall one.
Okay. So, but on your site, you said not generally, but on the site.
Yeah, we don't have, outside of the PACA and the open animal area, on lots that don't have PACAs, and for the open animal area, there's the buffer area now. And then the lot coverage restriction of 40% of the flat pad area. Outside of those requirements, we don't have anything more that defines open area on an individual lot.
Because the only thing, Mr. Mayor, the only thing I can find in permitted coverage, and this is on 18.13.20, is a contiguous, contiguous open animal area should be rectangular in shape with a minimum of 24 feet on any side. Total open area should be equal to the allowed number of animal units multiplied by 576. The contiguous open animal area shall be free of any structure required building permit. On lots one acre or less, contiguous open area shall be one contiguous area. And I think that's what Council Ambassador is referring to. And I agree with you, I think you have to find it. I don't see any other definitions. It's a contiguous lot.
Contiguous in that context means that it's not four different spaces separated by something combined into one single animal keeping area.
Robin, Berwin, any comment on that? What other architectural criteria should be included beyond what has already been Kind of the gist with me is that on this, and I'll maybe get into it in a little bit, is, um, the way I've seen this is it's not any objection to a pre-engineered steel building. It is the basically sidewall elements, and whether those are stucco, brick, block, wood, to me, it doesn't necess, if, if you'd like it to match your house, great. If, if you want the red barn, fine. I think what we're trying to do with this is just get away from the, the typical steel ag look that, that, that we've seen. So I kind of disagree with, you know, painted the color of the house, that even these larger manufacturers have realized that styles change, and you can take that building and it, you can make it look something a lot different. To me, it's like, you know, we, we live on half-acre building lots, okay? These aren't 100-acre parcels in the middle of Texas where an ag building is not offensive. And so I think what we have to do is we have to press more on our architectural review board and, and, but I also think that needs other members of the community. To me, a good architectural review board is designers, builders, and architects, okay? And though we do have that talent on the planning commission, I believe that we also have that, that talent with other residents. And I think a lot of this stuff goes away if, if we give this architectural board or commission or committee a little more authority, because they're the ones that are to look at the relationship and surroundings, okay? To me, that's the bulk, the height, the colors. So that's kind of where I'm, my opinion on architectural criteria. Yeah, go right ahead.
One of the problems that we had in talking to the planning commissioners is they were told not to look at the architectural review. This is what it says. Intent and purpose, it is hereby, is hereby found and declared that the city of Norco lies in a natural setting of rural scenic and historical beauty, that this rural environment generates a strong characteristic for development of Norco as a new equestrian focal point in Southern California, that this unique rural environment and historically significant location contributes to a material economic advantage to citizens, business, industry within the city, and particularly to the property owners who reside therein. And it basically goes on. Natural rural environment is necessary to maintain such historical and economic advantage to encourage permanence of desirable residential areas. I mean, who wants to live next door to a gigantic metal building five feet from the fence? This is, they were told not to look at this. And so I'd love it, and because truthfully, almost none of these buildings would have been built had they gone by the architectural criteria.
Mm-hmm. Believe me, I'm aware of what that, that board is to do. Is there any other architectural criteria? Ted, Robin, Berwin?
Yes, if I can, Mr. Mayor. I, I would like to, if we're going to talk, and I, and I know the ARC code there, and I would like to keep that in there, but I also like to add the visual, the visual. I think that's where you were going to come in with how this, so they can look at the visual aspects of a building in that neighborhood, how it affects the neighbors. If it's, I don't believe it's in there.
Yeah, I think it is, I think it is in there, but we can strengthen it.
We can put that in there, because I think that's very important.
Maximum height of large animal keeping shelter accessory buildings should be. Ted, you brought up about consistency. Let's be consistent. If, if it's 18 feet, it's 18 feet. If it's 17 feet or 20 feet.
I, I just think it's easier for especially our planners, people at the counter, they all know it's one height, oh, I don't have to look at this thing and this thing. It's 18 feet. I mean, we've already talked about the height needed for the RVs, the planning commission did, we did on the ad hoc committee. I'm good, 18 feet, that's about as big as you.
I am too. I mean, there were some comments, and believe me, I've researched this, I spent most of the weekend on this, and, and I also looked at a lot of different other cities. Actually, 17 feet came up as kind of a unique number that didn't seem to work very well, but in other cities.
You know, the, the height isn't so, you know, if they follow the criteria of the architectural code, in other words, they break the bill, they break up the sides, they, they create levels, 17, 18 feet is...
I mean, I'm fine with 18, as long as it's consistent with what we're doing with other buildings. Okay with that? Property on a septic system or proposing an accessory building with an RV dump and/or restroom, should the owner be required to connect to the sewer system as a condition of approval? My thoughts on that, Steve, are if, if you have a septic and you want it at a restroom or an RV dump, I think there should be a condition or a, or a building requirement that you would have that looked at by a septic engineer, would that be a civil engineer? Whatever authority would do a fixture count to say that septic can take that additional flow, okay? And then if it, it can't and it doesn't calc, you have a choice. You can either not build it or you could connect to the sewer. I, I don't see any other way with that.
No, I think we just ought to continue to observe and follow our current codes on, on any other thing, and that would be it.
Yeah.
The size of the restroom, 30 square feet, does seem a little small.
Well, let me get to that, if you want me to jump out of order.
Oh, that's, oh, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I was thinking restroom, I apologize. You're right, it's another...
So this was kind of interesting. So this, I'll go to, it was number seven for a 30-square-foot...
I'm sorry.
...restroom, okay? One basin, so one lav, one toilet. And Steve, you had a comment in there about the restrooms that meet ADA standards, okay?
Yep.
And my research tells me that in a residential use, which all these would be, you do not have to meet ADA standards.
That's correct.
Okay? So that's not a requirement. But if you would like to meet ADA standards, your restroom is going to be no less than 49 square feet, seven by seven, or eight by eight. And that allows for the five-foot circle, the two-foot, four inches between a lav and a toilet, and the four-foot dimension from wall to face a toilet and face a lav. So the smallest area you could possibly put this into is a seven by seven. Now, the other thing is that Berwin had brought up a shower in there, that in a creative situation, you could add a shower. But what happens in certain occupancy codes, and this would be for the attorneys, that if you add a lav and a toilet and a shower, you have almost now set the precedent that it's, I think it's under a U occupancy, it's okay to put a bedroom in there, okay? And you, you could possibly make that case. So my opinion's going to be that I think you need 50 square feet, and you'll be allowed a lavatory and a toilet, no shower.
I'm good with that.
Let you guys jump in on that.
How big did you say?
Well, seven by seven is 49 square feet.
Right.
They've got the toilet and the shower in the same area, and it wouldn't be much trouble to put a sink in that small area either. And that's what brought up the deal about septic tank versus the sewer, but...
Well, after I started looking at that code, it was with that occupancy that it could lead to making the case to have a bedroom in there, but there are like 15 different dimensions in a bathroom.
Right.
I'd just say 50 square feet, but you don't have to meet ADA standards for that on a residential use.
Mr. Mayor, I...
Go ahead.
I can almost live with 50 square feet. I just don't want to get to the point where we are setting up like a nanny state that you can only do this. If you want to, he wants to put a 100-square-foot bathroom in there...
Oh, yeah.
And take up the space in his, in his RV garage or his storey shop for that. I don't care, it's his space, his or her space, but at the same time, I understand why, why do we really need to restrict it for them?
It, because it's the minimum.
The minimum.
Like all codes are the minimum.
Okay, so this, so this would be the minimum, 50 square feet, is what you're saying?
Yeah, to make it work. I mean, yeah, if you want to use half your shop for a toilet and a lavatory...
Yeah, that's, okay, that's fine.
Just knock yourself out. I don't have a problem with that use.
Okay.
I think inspections should only be if they're complaint-driven. No annual inspections or anything like that, only if there's a code complaint made against that property.
Mr. Mayor, I think the inspections, and I agree with you on that, if there is no CUP, but I believe if the CUP is issued, I, I would, because you're talking about a conditional use permit versus just an application. And that's what I was saying is, so, and, and this goes back to, are we, if this goes through, we will no longer have a CUP process, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, I, I'm just, I, I just want the, the residents to understand that we're, so we're all on the same page here. Without the CUP in, in issue, then we won't have inspections, which I'm good with, and that should be done through a code enforcement. But if it's a CUP issued for any buildings or anything like that, then we would still have that option on, in conditions of approval. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, just so that we are saying the same thing, that the type of inspection that you're talking about based upon a code enforcement complaint would be this, upon demand by the city, would be one of the conditions on the approval of the accessory building. Otherwise, we have to go to court and, and seek an inspection warrant, and requires involvement of the neighbors and a whole lot of other things. I don't think it's what you really want.
Okay, now you got me confused now, because what I was trying to get away from are these mandatory inspections, except for CUPs.
Yeah, and that, and that's why I said what I said. I think that the proposal on this side of me was that the inspection could occur upon a code enforcement complaint, but the ability to have access to the property to do the inspection would be a condition of the approval. I mean, functionally like a CUP.
No?
Right.
If, okay, if, I mean, again, I'm not, I'm not telling you what direction to go, just so you understand, that if, if all you're saying is that the only inspection would occur as a result of a code enforcement complaint, gaining access, as we know from the ones that exist now, gaining access is extremely difficult. Code enforcement complaint means that the next-door neighbor thinks that something's going on, but that doesn't get me into the building. It has, there has to be more substantial evidence of something actually occurring, so I can go to a judge and convince him that there's a reasonable suspicion that there is a code enforcement violation, so that I can then get into the building. As opposed to the other option, which is kind of in between a CUP and that, which says that as a condition of receiving approval for an accessory building under the new rules, that if there is a code complaint, that the city has the ability upon notice to inspect the facility.
You know, it's interesting you bring that up, because you've, you've totally illustrated the problem with code enforcement. I know of three buildings that right now have full-fledged operating businesses going out of them, and we almost can't touch them. One of the things brought up are the birds. How many months, years did we spend on those birds? How many months, years, did we spend on those birds trying to get that to be shut down? Now, I'm going to ask tonight, that we go back there tonight, because they can only have so many, but code enforcement, people don't understand that it takes months and years to enforce it. So if somebody builds one of these buildings and puts a business into it, you could be looking at a year, two years, they could take you clear back to the beginning, there's all kinds of things that can happen. And if you also recall, if a city runs out of money, I mean, when I got on council, Berwin, we had no code enforcement because we had no money. Took five years to get code enforcement back, five years. So I'm, while I don't really want to go on people's property, I also would like to circumvent, because everybody wants code enforcement, but the problem is, how do you do it so it's fair? But also, if somebody abuses the privilege of getting one of these buildings, how do you enforce it as quickly as possible?
Well, let's say this, then. Because I've heard this from the residents, obviously, and in the letters, it's a code enforcement issue is one of the concerns. Let's put another tool in the toolbox for code enforcement.
Like that.
And think that, but it has to be complaint-driven.
Yeah, that's great.
I think that could be fair. Okay with that? Should sandwich panels be a restrictive material? My opinion is no. I think that those type of panels, like you see them on MD barns.
Okay.
Do you also see them on pre-engineered steel buildings? And they can have different textures, finishes, different simulated looks. So I'm just trying to address the aesthetics of that, so I don't have a problem using those.
Especially with all the new stuff they have. I went online after Berwin spoke last time, and I mean, it's amazing what's out there.
Drive you crazy.
Yeah.
Proposed graduated setbacks, not be required for lots that have PACAs. And I have a little heartburn with this, that we talked about it a little bit earlier, on the PACA itself, Primary Animal Keeping Area, no graduated setbacks, okay? Is my thought. And Steve, we've talked about this, on the rest of the property, okay? On every PACA, there's also a fifteen-foot dedicated clear access to the PACA, okay? By the time those restrictions are all in place, there isn't that much room left, okay? And this was, the problem that I have, though, is where I support graduated setbacks, that where a building could be detrimental to the neighbors or to the neighbors' enjoyment of that property. And I still don't have the answer that, what gives me the right to cast a shadow on your And that's where I get hung on all of this. But I believe the properties that are already deed-restricted are restricted enough. Then I take this argument back with myself and go back to the Architectural Review Board. With these ordinances, could the Architectural Review Board go, okay, on deed-restricted properties, you don't have a graduated setback, but the building you're proposing is blocking your neighbor's view, is casting a shadow on their property, and is detrimental to their enjoyment of their property? Can that, can that case be made?
Sure. Remember that the purpose of a setback, and whether it has to have PACAs or anything else, is the minimum amount that you have to be away, I mean, you just can't be closer.
Right.
But if there are other criteria, including impact on adjacent properties, there's no reason why it can't be greater.
Can I ask a question?
Although you probably should make that clear in the ordinance.
Yeah, and that's kind of where I'm going with it. Now, I also looked up other cities, okay? For every, and it was basically a one-to-two ratio that I found to be fairly consistent. For every one foot you wanted to gain in height, you added two foot to the setback. And we're at a foot and a half, or, I'm sorry, we're one to one and a half, so I don't think we're being overly excessive on that. So that's kind of how I feel with the deed-restricted properties in regard to item number eight, proposed graduated setbacks, not required. Comments?
I just have one in that. In that, again, and I agree with you, I think you need to, but I still would like to see the ARC along with the neighboring comments.
Right.
Because, and just like in my case, if I was to put up an eighteen-foot barn, the neighbor behind me, he's going to look at twenty-eight feet by the time it's built to peak. And I think he would have, should have, I mean, you know, you've got to be good neighbors because that's how you get along. And so I think that should be taken into effect, is the comments, and would we still have those letters go out to those people at three hundred feet squared? If I wanted to build this, what's going to impact? Most of the time, they're not going to care, but if you got the one, have them legitimately, then you work it out. So that's, I think you need to do that, so we don't have that casting a shadow on somebody else, especially on those ones up in the hills where they have that.
So what happens when you build something and a PACA is put onto your property, in a large property? In other words, you're on a big flat half-acre, and when you build something, you get a PACA? What happens? Would you, I mean, does a PACA in the hills, the same as a PACA in the flatlands? Flat property as opposed to a hillside?
This is a dilemma that we've fought since day one. Every lot's different.
Right. I'm just curious.
And, but on the same side, I can say I support a graduated setback, but you already have restrictions placed on that property.
Yeah. Well, I do too, so I'm with you.
To me, that's where it gets tough.
I think it goes to Robin's point, that this is something, the boat analogy makes me a little crazy, but it cracks me up. But it's good in that, the good news, what I did like, and she explained it better for me today, is that this is something that actually, she's right. And part of it was, we're busy doing other things, but we need to look at this every six months. We need to be checking this, and so if we have a problem like this, where somebody wants to build something and you're kind of looking at the property, I think that it key is that we get reports and we know what's going on. And I think that that is going to solve a lot of the problems. You know, one of the things that people don't realize is, your council is super accessible. I mean, I get lots of phone calls, call us, and if you're really having a problem, come to us. But I think that's key to making this work, is we need to check it all the time.
So the last one, we hadn't, I think we've somewhat addressed it, a future specific plan amendment, Steve?
But can I get clarification on number eight? So if a lot has a PACA restriction on it, an accessory building can go to the current allowed five-foot setback line? Or as approved by, or just they're allowed to go to five foot, period?
That's the way I feel about that, on a deed-restricted property. That's my opinion only.
I thought you said that the ARC, if it determines...
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And that's what I'm saying. Also, with that is...
Includes the PACA, though.
Architectural review.
So they can, they, in their review, can increase that setback as they deem needed to protect the neighbor?
On the property, not on the PACA. Because I can't, if you want, I can't make these PACA numbers work, okay? But we have proposed, if I have a three thousand square-foot PACA, okay, I can cover forty percent of that today, which would allow me to build a twelve hundred square-foot animal keeping building, okay? If I start with the, at whatever height you want to pick, if I start with graduated setbacks on a PACA that's thirty foot wide at a minimum, I've got a barn that's maybe four foot wide, okay? And way tall, I can't make those numbers work realistically, so...
So I just want to clarify that the ARC...
But could, for example, the ARC say, okay, five feet is the minimum, but given these circumstances and where the house is located, and that ten feet makes more sense here?
This is why you'll go crazy, because then it'll be, well, what about the view? Like Ted said, you have up PACAs, down PACAs, and his neighbor's view with an eighteen-foot barn is now twenty-some feet, okay?
Well, although I don't think that the criteria, the ARC criteria, is that you can't impact the view, because by definition, you're going to impact the view when you put anything there. So the question is whether or not it's the, you can positively affect the impact on a reasonable basis by moving it further away from the five-foot setback. And if you don't want to get into that...
Well, this is where, this is what drives me crazy with all this, because the more we add to this, and then we start talking about, but you can get a variance, you can get a variance on this. And I'm more hardline on, you don't hand variances out like candy, all right? And I don't want to create a code where, don't worry about that one, they can get a variance. Don't worry about this one, they can get a variance. So that's why I'm being obstinate about that.
No, that's fine. I just need to know, when I write the ordinance, does the ARC have the ability to require them to go beyond the five foot, or five foot they're allowed to do automatically?
And actually, I suppose, go back to some of the comments that Jody made, that if somebody bought a piece of property that has a PACA on it, and that one next door has a PACA, it's a recorded document, when you bought it, you knew where it was, and you knew that the rule was that there was the potential of a building potentially being built, a barn, within five feet of your property line. So maybe there isn't the same kind of issue that there might be without a PACA.
I'm going to say no graduated setback on a PACA.
On the PACA? I guess I'm confused. I'm confused what you're saying.
Saying that there's no rule change with regard to PACAs and setbacks.
In terms of the PACA itself? Okay, gotcha.
Well, in terms of the structure.
Now, on structure, like an accessory building?
On the PACA?
No, not on the PACA, just in the backyard. And that also should just be, no graduated setback, but the Architectural Review Board.
Yeah, but now you're, because, you know, the legal height of a building in Norco, as we speak, is fourteen feet high, eight sixty-four square feet. It's not twenty feet, it's not eighteen, it's not seventeen. And I don't know, there's a part of me, and it didn't work, because nobody was looking at the impacts. There weren't any studies at all. So how do we ensure that the Architectural Review Board, I mean, maybe one of the things that needs to happen, is because we're going to have to come up with criteria, we may not be able to do it tonight, but I think that going back to a class for all of us, every time you get on Planning Commission, every time you become a council member, I think you do a class in this, so that we all understand what the criteria is, so that it's fair.
I'll go back...
How many properties are we talking about that would be affected by that size, by that? Everybody in the hills, essentially?
Yeah, five hundred and seventy-some, and how many divisions of property have we done through town?
I think there's probably forty in the A1 zone, where they have PACAs. Most of them are in Norco Ridge Ranch.
A little over six hundred?
Yeah. So to go back to where I think you're currently standing, if the structure is built in the PACA, then the current rules apply, setback can be five feet. If the structure is built outside the PACA, it's the ARC determines the potential view impact, as well as other impacts, of course. Is that right?
That's the way I'm leaning with it. But you all have...
As one who, the only one up here who has a PACA, that at least it's easier to deal with and understand it that way, because you're all right. The PACA has to be thirty-five feet from the residence, can't be closer. You know, you've got thirty feet wide most of the time, most of the lots up there are eighty feet wide, and you've got to maintain the fifteen-feet corridor back and forth to it. And for those that don't have their PACA on the same level as their property, or up above it, there's even further restrictions, so it's...
Start running out of room.
You start, you do, you start running out of room. I mean, I've got my four Corrells, and I tell you what, if I'm outside of my PACA, just to put four twenty-four by twenty fours up there, and it's, because it's, there's not a lot of room, especially with the breezeway in between, and there isn't, so...
And believe me, I looked at every PACA size in Norco Ridge Ranch, okay? So, specific plan, Norco Hills specific plan on the grading, I think we're pretty well through that. You have a direction? So just kind of lastly on this, that I didn't use the boat analogy, but it's better that we do and review, review and update zoning requirements and zoning ordinance, that's just better zoning practices.
It's like doing a bottom job on your boat, once you get here.
Oh, my God. Can't we like, use mule analogies, or...
Okay. Thanks for that, John. I mean, one of the biggest challenges we have, though, and whether it's on council, but certainly on the Planning Commission, is understanding the difference between public interest and property rights. And that, I think, to me, has always been a struggle. And whatever regulations you have, regulations have to be reasonable. The problem is, reasonable is a vague concept. And that, once again, becomes the challenge for me with that. Partizoning, it's height, bulk, setback requirements, and where it's important is where buildings will have a detrimental effect on the neighbor's enjoyment of their property. And then I get back to that, cast a shadow on my neighbor's property concern. So I want to see a bigger push with an Architectural Review Board or Committee, okay? That they're the ones that, I think, need to set what the relationship to surroundings are, Steve. Like I said, we have capable people on planning, but I think we could expand that a little bit, even if it was a third person, okay? And I'll agree with Kevin, nobody should be told to ignore that, because I think that it's critical. What that does, it somewhat frees up the Planning Commission to look at zoning issues, okay? Which is their purpose. You know, I've been with them, they're all good guys, but they're not all architects and builders. There's a few that I never would have wanted, you know, them to design anything for me, but... So I think that's, you know, the hard part, it's how do we find the middle ground? I mean, our purpose is this, that where do we all, you know, how do we come together on this? I think everyone in the room should agree with our development plan, our land use element, its small-plot agricultural, cultural, animal-keeping lifestyle. That we should all be able to agree on. We have the two extremes. One is no accessory buildings whatsoever, and the other side is build whatever you want, zone. want, zone. So, trying to get this, how do we bring all that together? And I'm thinking we're going in the right direction with this, as long as we try to keep it all fair and reasonable for all. So, that's about all I have to say on the matter. We do have three separate ordinances in front of us. And I'm open to either recommendations on those three ordinances, or...
Did we add that there'll be a class, and that there will be, in other words, like a seminar for us, and that also there'll be a review in six months?
I will remind you, I think you already know, but that this, since it's amending Title 18, under our charter, requires four-fifths vote.
Are we, does everybody feel pretty clear on this, that, I mean, you have, got your answers, your directions? No?
One small clarification. Is paint enough for matching the building, or not?
What are you painting?
That's your building, to match your house.
Sandwich panel that has stucco on it? Great, I have no problem.
Or should we leave it up to the ARC?
That goes back to the Architectural Review.
I think they're capable of making that decision, so I'll leave.
I would use a better product than what the Hoffmanns used.
Well, you know, that's a really good question, because I would expect, like, there's, there's one of these buildings going up in a neighborhood, that it's, they're sort of like Tudor, there's a very specific style that people purchased. And I would expect them maybe to look and say, "Okay, what would fit?"
Right.
That kind of thing.
But realize, you're only going to paint on wood, okay? I mean, you can, if you're going with a metal stucco panel or something like that, those are all prefinished. Like, if you were going to go with an MD panel, I believe you can get those in different colors.
So, I have a question, then. If we're voting tonight, we're going to assume that everything we addressed is going to be in there?
Yes, and it will appear in the second reading.
Okay.
Check it then.
And we can check it, and if something's not right, we can fix it? Okay.
I make a motion to approve, do one, two, three, or one each?
We need to do them all separately.
I make a motion to approve the first one.
An ordinance of the City Council, City of Norco approving Zone Code Amendment 2017-01, amending Title 18 by adding Chapter 18.68, accessory building use permits, with other amendments to cross-references in Title 18 as needed. Zone Code Amendment 2017-01.
Councilmembers Hannah? Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve number two.
An ordinance of the City Council, City of Norco approving Specific Plan 91-02, Amendment 9, for the regulation of accessory buildings with other amendments to cross-references in Specific Plan 91-02 as needed. Specific Plan 91-02, Amendment 9.
Councilmembers Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion to approve three.
An ordinance of the City Council, City of Norco approving Specific Plan 99-01, Amendment 7, for the regulation of accessory buildings with other amendments to cross-references in Specific Plan 99-01 as needed. Specific Plan 99-01, Amendment 7.
Councilmembers Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, item next. John?
This is the, listed on the agenda, an inter, inter emergency ordinance, which, if you chose to adopt it, would prohibit consideration or approval of accessory buildings for a period of 45 days. It's probably, I mean, I guess it makes it a little cleaner if you did adopt it, but it's probably unnecessary, since the city currently has a policy of not accepting any applications in any case. As long as there's some direction to continue that policy, I don't know that a moratorium specifically is necessary. The only, if you do adopt it, I mean, there's no downside particularly either, that the 45-day period is pretty close to matching what it'll take for the second reading and 30-day implementation, so if you want to just be certain that nobody raises any issues concerning, "Well, I have a right to apply," then adopt it, and there's really no downside to doing it. And it also requires a four-fifths vote.
Not necessary, though? Is that...
Well, absolutely necessary, no. Making it so that, because staff does occasionally get people coming in saying, "Oh, you know, your rules are this, and by God, take this application." This at least tell, allows staff easily to say, "The City Council enacted a moratorium until the new ordinance is effective."
Is it legal just not to process the application?
That's what we're doing now. Yeah, just, also, just, it eliminates some arguments that have gone on.
I make a motion to approve this.
Another discussion, again? 45 days, this cannot be extended, correct?
No, that's not quite true.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, this interim ordinance can't be. What the, what the statute requires is that if you choose to extend it, then there's a notice public hearing. And in this case, I can't imagine that that's going to be the case. This ordinance itself literally can't be extended.
You know I hate moratoriums. I just hate them.
And so, I understand that, and that's why I'm saying that it's probably, under the circumstances, not legally absolutely necessary.
Okay, so it's 45 days only?
Yes.
Question.
Go ahead, Rob.
So, the ones that are in the pipeline right now, what's, those will just continue?
Those are the two that I talked about earlier. There's one, Mr. Pulley, left. I don't know whether he's exactly in the pipeline, but he was turned down in a little bit different circumstances than he described, or a lot different circumstances than he described. But nonetheless, he has the choice to appeal or to refile an application. We're going to treat him as if he were under the old system. And again, I'll remind everybody that the old system is really no different than what you have before you, that there is nothing in the old system, this conditional use permit, which precluded the Planning Commission, City Council from saying, "Well, we think that's too big." There's, and there is no entitlement of any kind to receiving a conditional use permit. So, that, as we've had this discussion quite a few times, but at least theoretically, the new quote rules could be applied under the conditional use permit processing procedure. And the Planning Commission was telling Mr. Pulley, practical matters, I'm sorry he's not here, but that they just couldn't redesign the project for him. And they couldn't guarantee that anything he proposed that night, that they'd approve, regardless of what it was, that was all. And then the second one is, I don't know, I've forgotten the name, but it's one that will be, at least theoretically, on the agenda...
On the 26th.
26th. Okay.
And that's it.
And there's one more, a 900-square-foot one, it's also on the... Okay, and it'll be in May. It started long ago also, it's, but it's only 900 square feet, so it's not...
Mayor, I have cards on this item.
Okay.
Want to go ahead and hear them now?
Yes, please. I'm sorry, Cheryl, thank you for interrupting.
Linda Dixon?
I know it's not legally necessary to go ahead with a moratorium, but I would suggest that we do. The reason being, we made a major mistake in 2010. We did have a moratorium at that time, and it worked beautifully. However, our city employees were not schooled on the changes. And I think we need, for nothing else, everyone to be schooled on these changes, so we do not end up in this black hole again. I think it's, I just think it's just a small price to pay for not making the same mistakes twice.
Thank you.
Scott Coke?
Good evening again. I do not believe that this moratorium is needed, even though you've just enacted a new ordinance. We had checks and balances in place, however, some of those levels were, when the ARC committee's the same as the ADHOC committee, the same as the Planning Commission, we, we don't need it. There's three in the pipeline, we've already been told they're going to be under the old rules. I think if you enact the moratorium now, at the last Planning Committee, or at the last Planning Commission meeting, or I think it was two meetings ago, about half a dozen people said, "Hey, we tried to turn in applications, and they weren't allowed." I think by enacting a moratorium now after the fact, the attorney can comment on this if he likes, but I think we're opening ourselves up to a suit by saying that, "Hey, there was half of these dozen people that came up and said, 'I tried to turn it in, and I was turned away without cause.'" Now you're, after the fact, a month later, showing there is a cause, because there's a moratorium, it just, I think it's going to dirty the waters, muddy the waters, and it's going to cause issues and cost the city money in the long run. There's a lot of people upset that are going to get together with a lawyer and sue the city. It's going to happen. And I think by doing this, it's going to, it's just enraged them more, and they're going to get their stuff together, they're going to get together as a group, and they're going to do it. So, don't give them that ammunition. That's what you're giving them if you put this moratorium in now.
Thank you.
Mike Thompson?
Scott.
Pat Overstreet?
I support the moratorium, thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Long?
My wife tells me that you all might have thought I was mad, I'm not. I asked her about what I want to do, I apologize if you got that. Bottom line is, I'm not giving any of it. You know, I retired a couple of years ago, I got money together to build this building, and I want to build it. The building I'm proposing to build, it's been under new laws or the old laws. All I have, I went to this gentleman right here, get it out of January, mid to late January. What do I got to do? He handed me the stuff, "Go hire yourself, somebody draw up the plans, yada, yada, yada." I go get my engineer, get everything done. I done my plans last Friday night. Coming to the meeting, I believe, early April, I find out, oh my God, they're not even accepting plans, and haven't been. Yet two weeks before the January 31st meeting, apparently, it wasn't necessary to tell me this was coming. So, I took the information given, being given to my engineer, and now I'm going to have to take them back and say, "Okay, all these changes have been made, you know, change all this, that's costing me money." And what really upsets me, I'm replacing a rotten building that is about to fall down. And I was told by a local contractor that's worked here for many years, that if you're replacing an existing building, you don't fall under these neighborhoods, needs to approve this, and yada, yada, yada. The bottom line is, although I didn't have my plans there, it was well-known that I had the intention of putting these plans there, and I just couldn't get them in time before you guys set this up. You know, I guess for me. But the bottom line is, if you decide you want to do this, then please just do it, and get it done. We don't need a moratorium, but if you don't put a moratorium on it, please get it done. You know, I'm not giving any of it.
That concludes comments.
Just one comment on that I'd like to make, in terms of lawsuits. One of the things that is, for me, really important that I've learned in the last six months, is a lawsuit will cost you $100,000, $200,000, $300,000. And when a council makes a decision, correct me if I'm wrong, the judge goes, "Did you base it on something?" Absolutely. That building's made of green cheese. Guess what? The power of the lawsuit that civilians have outside of jurisdiction is so unfair, that that's why it's so important that we revisit this, we look at this, that we really make sure, we try to do everything we can to be fair, because the people at that podium have almost no power, once a decision is made. That stuff we used to think, "Oh, we got to protect ourselves against a lawsuit." Nah, no we don't, because the judges, I mean, it must be really screw up. They have no power, so we have to make sure we do this right for their sake. Anyway, there's a motion on the floor.
Cheryl, would you repeat the motion?
Motion was, Councilmember Bash moved to approve Interemergency Ordinance 1022, and it was seconded by Councilmember Hannah.
And still under discussion, though. This is going to be 45 days only?
Actually, I suppose you could say, I mean, I think, because it actually is proposed formally, you could say 45 days, or until the effective date of the revised ordinance is whichever soon.
Yeah, and that's what's in the, that's what I have a question on, because in the staff report, it said, "Or until the ordinance, they might, regulations are effective."
So, that's what I made the motion on, was that.
So, can you, do we need to modify that?
No, it's in the motion. I mean, it's in the, that it would be 45 days, or until... Or we can, or I can amend my motion and include that specifically.
Yeah, because in Section 3, it says, "And is effective for a period of 45 days from adoption." It doesn't have the other...
Okay, well, I'll add it to, and I will amend my motion that says, "Or until your ordinance goes into effect."
I just, still, I just want, don't, I want to make sure that this doesn't get extended out for the two years, or whatever.
Unless this council decides they want to hold a notice public hearing, get extended for a reason that's unimaginable. The purpose of a moratorium is that there's planning...
Okay, Rob, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Sorry, Cheryl.
Councilmembers Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I want to make one last comment. One of the reasons why maybe this was, to some extent, necessary, is that the purpose is to, planning purposes, and you have not seen the second reading, and it's entirely possible that somebody will say, "Wait a minute, I think that's what it's supposed to say, and we noticed it were, obviously, it's..." They're still defining process.
Thank you. City Council, City Manager, Staff Communications? Sergeant? Chief? No, sir. Brian? Speaker, Don, Chad? Alma? Cheryl? Okay, go ahead.
I have here, it says what I want.
Berwin, look at the first.
Yep.
I want to know, Steve, those packets that Linda Dixon was talking about at the first meeting, that the residents used to get when they come in to do the deal, I remember them. Do we still have those available, or can you dig them up and start getting them to everybody when they move into town?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do something, get together with the city court, and we'll, between the two of us, we'll come up with that. I'm not sure how it worked in the past, to be honest with you, that we could, we'll figure out something.
I remember they used to, when they come in to get the utilities, turn the old leg out, and when we started the Horsemans Association, they had just built those new homes over here next to the prison, on the broken twig, and all those streets. We took the Saturday and went out and asked about the neighborhoods, or whatever the animal keeping regulation was, but I think we need to get those back in production. Thank you. we took the Saturday and went out and asked about the neighborhoods, or whatever, the animal keeping regulation was, but I think we need to get those back in production. Thank you.
I just, I don't want to put you on the spot, but the gentleman from LMD2 in Norco Hills Park, and I know you have your meeting coming up, LMD2, I guess you can address some of his issues there, and thank you. And I know you guys are, you call services you can.
Councilman, I met with the gentleman in the hallway and gave my card, so we could set up a meeting with that neighborhood, and I'll work with RSL. I think it would be more productive doing it that way than versus there in the LMD.
Oh, I agree, I just, I just, he's been a long, lengthy on this survey, and he's going into, he forgot, and I saw the captain talking to him, so, thank you.
I just had a couple, what's the status on Hillside Place in terms of putting in that, I didn't get to it the last time. Are they, and then, one that they're going to run into, lying through, it's private street?
For the storm drain system?
Yeah.
They're still in design, they haven't finalized it, they haven't advertised it yet.
But they have all the permanents, everything's ready to go, right? Have they signed off on it?
I believe yes, they've already got all the easements from the property owners.
And then I had a woman approach me, and also, I think Ted, too, talk about North Drive, and maybe that long block wall, maybe do murals on it or something? She is from another community, she lives here, but she's, she's, has a position where they have a lot of murals and stuff, so maybe that's something we might want to look at and think about. Pinto Lane, where are we on that building doing now, Steve? Can we discuss it, or... Okay, then get back to me. And then I heard a complaint about the famous roosters, and I'm wondering if we can follow up on it, because I'd like to, you know, do we count roosters? What do we do?
Well, there's 16 roosters, so you can allow, period. So, as long as they stay within that number.
So they're being checked and everything?
When, we do it by complaint, so if there's a complaint, then we'll go out, roll to an investigation, starting with, make sure they're...
All right, thank you, Brian, I know it's pain, but someday we'll catch it. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm not going to say anything about the roosters. California and North, Chad, where are we, design-wise, proposal-wise?
We have material and information, we think we're finding, I'm bringing that back. I think it's the May 17th meeting, or is it 3rd?
17.
Yeah.
Are you happy with it? Are you think we're close on that we can make a decision?
Oh, yeah, sure, the materials are, it's just more of, with the budget and everything I'm coming through, it's just trying not to pile everything at one time, because there's, there's, it's just, we're having a discussion on it, should be fairly quickly, because I think we've got the elements that you, that I think the council will be, will, will like.
All right, good. So the last few weeks have been pretty rough on our little town, so what I'd like to do is adjourn this meeting in memory of Larry Tarpley. And if we just have a quick moment of silence. And we're adjourned.